You shouldn't meet them.
They are.
Oh.
And they're all such cute girls.
Yeah, they're, they're fine.
But she's more great.
They're quite pretty.
Like that great, lively, fluffy.
All in that great childhood.
She tells me that her brother is.
No.
She'll be very, very happy.
And so, so even when they go to their grandparent's house.
Well, all of them.
Yes, yes.
They're once surrounded by a few fingers.
That's great.
Yeah.
Late. Oh, is that good? Yeah.
She's like on cloud nine.
Good. She's wonderful. And I got to meet the, her husband too. I met her husband and dad as well. He's, I met the dad, yeah.
Yeah, he was delivering the mail.
Exactly, yes, yes. At the same time.
My neighbor, uh, she had, uh, she had quit.
That's so funny.
She did that. Yeah. He should be, he said he was coming.
No, we're not in, we'll make it.
Hello, Sheldon Jen.
Okay.
She's not coming. She, she had a bad.
But I don't think she's like a happy feeling about it. So.
Yeah.
We're almost done.
Anyway.
He had, he had a conversation.
Hello, hello.
Good, it was just stressful getting here. Dude, I fully thought it was just gonna be like so late.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it goes to the end slow. Yeah.
Started. All right.
Sorry.
Hello. All right, calling the December 12th. Can you nudge Maddie? You can't hear me? Hello? Hey, everyone. All right, we are calling the December 12th meeting to order at 6:02. Um, we are acknowledging that although we are, um, I guess live streaming the meeting, we are only taking public comments in person. Do we, oh, we have no closed session. Um, so we are gonna move on with the Pledge of Elysian. So if everyone could please stand with me. Okay, um, next up, we have adoption and approval of the agenda. Oh, I'm so sorry. Do we have any comments from the public on non-agendized items? Is there anyone here that has a comment about something that is not on the agenda? Oh, okay. All right, um, now we have adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I know most of you guys are here for Student of the Month, but we do have a little bit of business to take care of before we get to that. We'll try to get through it quickly. Um, we have the organizational part of our meeting where we are gonna nominate and elect our new board officers. First up, um, nomination and election of board president.
I move to elect Caitlin Quinn as our board president.
I second.
All in favor? Oh wait, do you accept? I accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. I'm gonna pass the gavel on to you now. All right.
All right, she's been waiting for that, y'all. Um, thank you, President Emerita Pond, for your two years of service and three. Oh my God, how, how is that possible? Um, I'm excited to take over the gavel. Thank you to President Webster and President Pond, both of you for your service and inspiration as past presidents. Um, with that, I'd like to move on to nomination and election of our board clerk slash vice president.
I nominate Sheldon Jen.
I second.
Oh, yeah, do you accept?
Yes.
All right, all of those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. We have our vice president slash clerk, Dr. Jen. Now we will move on to appoint our secretary. Do I hear a mo, do we need a motion? I think we need a motion. I, do I hear a motion?
I move to appoint our superintendent as our secretary.
Second.
Superintendent Harris, do you accept?
I gladly accept.
Gladly, well.
My official title, Secretary to the Board.
Secretary to the Board. Thank you for your service. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you to our team. And now we will select our representatives and alternative, alternate representatives to fill vacancies on the Sonoma County Committee on School District Organization. Matthew, can you tell us a little bit about what that is and who you're suggesting?
Well, I'm not suggesting anyone, but this is, this is a committee at the county level on school district organization when, uh, when they, when they need a board, board member representative from, from the various school districts. We have 40 school districts in, uh, in the county. And so they're looking for one school board member who would be willing to participate.
And Amy Carter sent me a letter and appointed me with, so.
Okay.
I don't know what that means.
I guess we have to vote for you. All right, so I nominate Ellen Webster to, to fill that position.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to do an alternate as well?
I nominate Maddie Gladys alternate.
I second.
Maddie, okay, perfect. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Great, look at that. Okay, last thing, y'all, I promise. Uh, board meeting dates. Uh, does anyone have any comments or questions on the dates that are presented and attached in the agenda?
So we've just put the dates for, for the remaining, remainder of the year. Once we bring the new, uh, calendar from the calendar committee, we'll then bring the, the dates for, uh, starting in July for the following year.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the board meeting date.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries. We have our dates for the rest of the school year. And now we can move on to the good stuff. Oh, nope, not quite. It's still good stuff. Uh, moving on to our public hearings. Um, our first public hearing is our contract reopeners with California School Employees Association, CSEA, um, and our districts. Do I need to do a gavel and?
Yes.
Okay. The hearing is now open.
Any, any public comment?
Can someone tell the audience what the public hearing is?
You wanna introduce it, Jason?
Um, yeah, so the public hearing is that we have, uh, sunshine, uh, both CSEA and Petaluma City has sunshineed our intentions for negotiations for this, uh, for this school year. Chair, are you sharing the details of those?
No, I think if there's, if there's any public comment, if not, we can close the hearing and move to the next one.
All right. The hearing is closed. And now moving on to our next public hearing, which is open, the public hearing on contract reopeners with Petaluma Federation of Teachers, the Adult Educators. Same thing, we are sunshining.
Yeah, both, uh, we, we're sunshining and, uh, Petaluma Federation of Teachers, Adult Educators are sunshining for negotiations for this year as well.
If there's any, any public comment, you're welcome to come up. See, no public comment.
Seeing none, we'll close that hearing as well. Um, as always, if you think of public comment later, you are welcome to email the board any thoughts or opinions you have. Um, and now moving on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations, we'll start with all of our students of the month. So we're gonna start with Kennelworth Junior High School.
The month, Dashell Lender Cullen. Dash's teachers have nominated him as a student of the month because he's a team player, displays a positive attitude, is amazing student. Dash is a wonderful citizen at Kennelworth, showing kindness to all those around him, offering help and engaging in activities to support the school. Recently, Dash presented with some idea, some of his peers to the school board in order to secure a new Lego robot for the robotics and engineering class to build with. Dash is proud of his academic success, having maintained a 4.0 GPA for both seventh and eighth grade. Ms. Martin from Physical Education shared that Dash is a positive and friendly person. He brings good energy to the class and exemplifies a good role for his peers. Dash is a really reliable, responsible, and mature, which makes him a great ma, match for partner and group work in all activities. He's absolute pleasure to have in class. Ms. Manera's Dash's math teacher says Dash is an excellent student in math class. Dash comes every, to class every day, prepared to participate in work. Dash asks questions when needed and is always ready to volunteer during class. In addition, Dash is a great team partner, often going out of his way to answer his partner's questions and help when someone needed. Dash is an enthusiastic lacrosse player. He's played with Petaluma River Cast Lacrosse Team for over eight years. Dash enjoys the physical and technical aspects of lacrosse and plans to play for the Casa Grande team. Dash is interested, interested in the world around him and enjoys learning new things and hopes he can also participate in the hatchery program at Casa Grande in his time there. Dash is a wonderful young person and Kennelworth is incredibly proud to call him a cult. Congratulations, Dash.
Congratulations, Dash. Do we have Dash's friends and family here? Can you stand so we can congratulate you as well? Go ahead.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our December Student of the Month, Valpree Cora. Prey has been selected by her teachers to be awarded as student of the month because she has an amazing worth ethic, is respectful to everyone around her, and because she is an incredibly kind human being. Ms. Waldemar, Prey's English teacher, says Prey is engaged in class, listening to instruction, completing her work, and working with her peers when appropriate. She has done a great job on her writing assignments. She not only follows the requirements of the assignments, but has done a marvelous job being creative with them and making them unique so they have a strong writing voice. She is a positive presence in class and has worked very well with whoever she sits by. She has been a treat to have in class. Prey and her family moved to Petaluma over the summer from Punjab region in India. From the very beginning of the school year, Prey's teachers started to notice this outstanding young woman for her academic excellence. Prey is a mathematicalist and was quickly recommended to move into Math 1 as an eighth grader. Prey has shared that math is her favorite subject, and she plans to continue advancing down the math pathway through high school and college. She hopes to find a career in math and science fields after graduating from university. Prey's hobbies include playing badminton, riding her bike, enjoying the beautiful local parks, and hanging out with her cousin. Prey plans to attend Casa Grande High School and has aspirations of playing badminton soccer and participating in the ASB leadership class as a Gaucho. Kennelworth has been luck, lucky to have Prey as a student this year, and we can't wait to, and we can't wait to see all of her future accomplishments. Congratulations, Valpree.
Congratulations, Prey. Do we have Prey's friends and family here in the audience? Congratulations. All right, thank you, Kennelworth. And now we'll move across town to Petaluma Junior High.
Uh, Petaluma Junior High School is proud to announce our December Student of the Month, Arrows Archiga. Okay. Ms. O's, Ms. O, Arrows' art teacher, says that Arrows is polite, kind, hardworking, creative, and works well with others. Arrows is a talented artist who always tries his best in class. Ms. Brown, school counselor, shared that Arrows is very respectful, kind, and always has polite, has a positive attitude, attitude. Mr. Lang, Arrows' science teacher, appreciates that Arrows has a great attitude, works hard, and a good example for his fellow students. Arrows says that, that, says that the things he enjoy, wait, oh, eh, sorry, spelling typo. Uh, things he enjoys the most about PJHS is his art class and math class. The reason he enjoys these classes is because of his friends and the teachers who do an amazing job at teaching these subjects. Outside, outside of school, Arrows participates in the chorus for St. Vincent's Church, and he recently competed, completed his first performance. When asked what he is most looking forward to about high school, Arrows says that, or said that he is excited to see old friends, meet new friends, and experience the exciting high school's curriculum. Arrows is not sure exactly what his goal, his goals are for the future, but he says that this education is very important to him, and he hopes to have a successful and well-play, playing career. Arrows' family is very proud to have, of his achievements. Arrows likes to play piano and help others. They also shared that Arrows is proud to be Mexican. They appreciate how hard Arrows works in that he sets goals for himself. Arrows is kind and caring and has many friends. His family is very proud to be celebrating him tonight. It is an honor to recognize Arrows Archiga as PJHS December Student of the Month. Congratulations, Arrows.
And do we have Arrows' friends and family in the audience? Can you please stand?
I'm gonna do it in Spanish. So, Petaluma Junior High School se enorgullece de presentar a nuestro estudiante del mes de diciembre, Arrows Archiga. La señora O profesora de arte de Arrows dice que Arrows es educado, amable, trabajador, creativo, creativo, y trabaja bien con, con los demás. Arrows es un artista talentoso que siempre hace lo mejor que puede en, en clase. La señora Brown, consejera escolar, compartió que Arrows es muy respetuoso, amable, y siempre tiene una actitud positiva, positiva. El señor, el señor Lane, el profesor de ciencia de Arrows, aprecia que Arrows tenga un, una gran actitud, trabaja duro, y es un buen ejemplo para sus compañeros. Arrows dice que lo que más disfruta de, de Petaluma Junior High School es un, es, es su clase de arte y de matemáticas. La razón por la que disfruta de, de estas clases es por sus amigos y los profesores que hacen un trabajo increíble enseñando estas mate, mate, materias. Fuera de la escuela, Arrows participa, participa, participa en, en el coro de la iglesia de San Vicente y, y recientemente completó su primera actuación. Cuando, cuando, cuando se le preguntó qué, qué es lo que más espera de la escuela secundaria, Arrows, Arrows dijo que es su, que está emocion, emocionado, de ver a viejos amigos, conocer nuevos amigos, y experimentar el emocionante plan de estudios de la escuela secundaria. Arrows no está seguro exactamente de cuáles son sus ob, ob, objetos para el futuro, pero dice que su educación es muy importante para él y espera tener una carrera exitosa y bien remunerada. La familia de Arrows está muy orgullosa de sus logros. A Arrows le gusta tocar el piano y ayudar a los demás. También compartieron que Arrows está orgulloso de ser mexicano. Aprecia lo duro que trabaja, Arrows, y es, y que es, y que se estable metas para sí mismo. Arrows es amable y cariñose, tiene muchos amigos. Sus, su familia está muy orgullosa de que está aquí celebrando esta noche. Es un honor reconocer a Arrows Archiga como estudiante del mes de diciembre de Petaluma Junior High School. Felicidades, Arrows.
Ms. O, Alonja's art teacher, says that Alonja is a talented artist who works very well with others and always participates in class. Alonja is kind, polite, hardworking, creative, and always tries her best. Ms. Brown, school counselor, appreciates Alonja's passion, caring for an artistic, and ca, caring for an artistic talent. Mr. Lang, science teacher, reports that Alonja has a great eye for detail in her work and that she's an excellent student in general. Alonja has this say about her favorite things about PJHS. The thing I enjoy the most about PJHS is my art and math class. The reason I enjoy these things is because of my friends and the teachers who do an amazing job at teaching these subjects. Outside of school, Alonja enjoys doing art at home or playing piano. She loves musics and likes to take walks, dog sit, or just rest. Alonja is looking forward to making new friends, taking new classes, and getting prepared for college when she goes to high school. Alonja hopes to attend Sanford University. California College of the Arts is her second choice. We asked Alonja's parents what they are most proud, proud of Alonja for. Her dad says that Alonja is very determined and focused to get her work done on time. She's great with numbers and her math scores show it. She's very social and is always easy to get along with. If things are hard, she won't give up until she solves the problem. Alonja is very talented with art, too. She's busy learning new things like piano. Alonja is not afraid of taking on a new challenge. A word that best describes her is confident. Alonja makes us very proud. And it is an honor to recognize Alonja Gonzalez as PJHS December Student of the Month. Congratulations, Alonja.
And Alonja's friends and family, please stand and let us celebrate you as well. Felicidades, congratulations. And now we'll hear the speech in Spanish, thanks to our interpreter.
La señ, la señora O profesora de arte de Alonra, dice que Alonra es un artista talentosa y que trabaja bien con los demás y siempre participa en clase. Al, Alonra es amable, educada, trabajadora, creativa, y siempre hace lo mejor que puede. La señora Brown, consejera escolar, aprecia la pasión, el cariño, y el talento artístico de Alonra. El señor Lane informa que Alonra tiene un gran ojo para los detalles en su trabajo y que es un, es una excelente estudiante en general. Alonra tiene esto que decir sobre sus cosas favoritas de Petaluma Junior High School. Lo que más disfruto de Petaluma Junior High School es mi clase de arte y matemáticas. La razón por, por la que disfruto de estas clases es por mi amigo y los profesores que hacen un trabajo increíble enseñando esas ma, materias. Fuera de la escuela, Alon, a, Alonra le gusta hacer arte en casa o tocar el piano. Le encanta la música y, y le gusta pasear, cuidar pe, perros, o simplemente descansar. Alonra espera hacer nuevos amigos, tomar nuevas clases, y prepararse para la universidad cuando vaya a la escuela secundaria, sec, sec, ya secundaria. Alonra espera asistir a la Universidad de Stanford. California Coleg, College of the Arts es su segunda opción. Preguntamos a los padres de Alonra porque están muy orgullosos de, de Alonra. Su papá dice que Alonra está muy dedicada y, y concentrada, y concentrada en, en terminar su trabajo en tiempo. Ella es excelente con los números y sus pun, y sus puntajes en matemáticas lo des, lo demuestran. Ella es muy sos, sus, ella es muy sociable y fácil de, de tratar. Si las cosas se ponen difíciles, Alonra no se dará por, ven, por vencida hasta, hasta solucionar, solus, sol, solun, sol, solunciar, solunciar al, al, el problema. Alonra también tiene mucho talento con el arte. Está ocupada aprendiendo cosas nuevas como el piano. Alonra no tiene miedo de as, asumir una, un nuevo desa, desafío. Una palabra que mejor la, la describe es segura. Alonra nos hace sentir muy orgullosos. Es un honor reconocer a Alonra como estudiante del mes de diciembre de Petaluma Junior High School. Felicidades, Alonra.
Congratulations and thank you. Congratulations, Arrows and Alonja. Awesome. Next up, we have Casa Grande. All right, we have a special Casa Grande. We have a team effort. We come in for all the teams tonight. So, um, Jaden is actually gonna present, present about Philip, and then I'm gonna present about Taylor. So, my notes are here, Jaden.
All right. Casa Grande is proud to present Philip Liu, our, one of our beloved student board members, as student of the month. Philip is a senior at Casa Grande. He has always excelled in school as both his immigrant parents have persistently urged him to achieve academic excellence. However, his true love belongs to sports. Simply put, Philip is a very competitive person. This determination has led him to play two varsity sports at Casa and urges him to do as many sports-related activities as possible in his free time. For instance, Philip is currently interning for Prep Baseball Report Cal, oh, Californian, also volunteers at several youth sports camps. Furthermore, Philip just loves to watch sports and play fantasy football. This is why Philip hopes to pursue a sports management degree in college, but since that major isn't available at many schools in California, he will apply to other schools as a business major. Hopefully, with hard work and dedication, Philip can fulfill his dream of becoming a sports agent and organize million-dollar contracts and endorsements for professional players. Finally, the most important aspect about Philip is his faith. Philip is Christian and hopes to use his time in this world to positively impact as many other people as he can, whether it is through his church, extracurricular activities, or his own free will. Congratulations, Philip.
Congratulations, Philip. And I think we have your family in the back over there. Congratulations, family. All right, well, I get to present about Taylor, who I just met about 20 minutes ago. I'm so excited. And this is Taylor Bobbi, and she is a senior at Casa Grande High School. She has excelled at Casa, taking rigorous AP. She has excelled at Casa, taking rigorous AP honors and JC classes. At school, she enjoys math courses like calculus. Her passion for learning drives her motivation to attend a four-year college/university after high school and major in mathematics. Outside of school, Taylor participates in competitive dancing, which she has done for the last 14 years of her life, and hopes to continue in college, as she has dedicated so much to the sport. She has also recently played in the first season ever of girls' flag football. Both of these sports have served as ways for Taylor to meet both new people and some of her closest friends. She also takes pride in helping the community. For the past year and a half, Taylor has volunteered every weekend at Santa Rosa Food Distribution in an effort to help and, help feed and support those who are in need. Today, Taylor is extremely thankful for her family, friends, and teachers who have helped her get to where she is today. Congratulations, Taylor. Congratulations, Taylor. Do we have Taylor's friends and family in the audience somewhere? Congratulations and thank you. Thank you all for repping Casa. Um, next up, we'll go back to Petaluma High. Can I have the speakers come up for?
Presenting for Petaluma, too. First of all, I just want to say I'm so proud to present these two because they're close friends in my ASB class.
Yeah.
Okay. Petaluma High School is proud to present Gabby Trave as student of the month. This is Gabby Trave. She is a senior at Petaluma High School, and she has been in ASB the past three years. Her goal as a leader is to represent and celebrate each individual at Petaluma High School. Her impact began small, starting with the incorporation of various awareness months, and now she is grateful to have a larger platform in the community. As senior class president and outreach captain, she has been able to get, set her, set her graduating class up for success by organizing resources that give students the substantial support they need for the future. In the pursuit of amplifying voices, Gabby has established the Creating Connections Foundation, which is an organization that is in partnership with our district to ensure that local student perspectives are represented. Gabby created this foundation with the focus of combating isolation through cultivating community. Creating Connections Foundation has given her the space to not only foster equity on campus, but also address larger-scale problems with both students and administration. A notable co- a notable accomplishment in advocating for the PHS student community was the successful organization of Noche Hispana, a joint effort involving our World Language Department and Bilingual Students Association. Before her role as outreach captain, the extent, the extent of her efforts for Hispanic Heritage Month was limited to hallway decorations. Through proper, proper communication and collaboration, she orchestrated a vibrant celebration with traditional food, live music, and engaging activities. By actively involving the community, she not only raised awareness, but also generated profits direct, directed back to Bilingual Students Association, fostering a deep understanding of Hispanic heritage schoolwide. Gabby's highlight of her senior year was being a part of the inaugural water polo team. After three years of advocating as president and founder of the Coed Water Polo Club, the district finally proved a girls' team for the fall of 2023. As team founder and team captain, she is very proud to leave a legacy behind. In addition, she is a four-year varsity swimmer. Gabby's passion for climate activism became extremely clear her junior year in her marine science classroom, where she was able to learn about the science behind the ocean and the animals that inhabit it, inhabit it. This knowledge helped her make a hands-on impact as a part of the youth crew at the Marine Mammal Center in Sausalito, which has been, which has been the opportunity of her life thus far. For the first time, she was able to see the severity of climate change and its global impact. This not only gave her the opportunity to work towards a tangible solution, but she also got to tell her stories to the public. This allowed her to explore her passion for education and communication. Gabby intends to make her childhood dream come true by pursuing an environmental science-based major in college, as well as minoring in Spanish. Although the two may seem far apart, she hopes to communicate various policies with people all over the world to ensure that her plans have longevity. In addition to her advocacy, she has noticed that impoverished coastal communities are heavily affected by climate change due to storm surges, often leaving communities homeless, which categorizes climate change as a social justice issue. In order to be a catalyst in the movement toward equi- equity, she is a part of the California Youth Climate Policy Leadership Program, where she is trained to enact legislation in our local community regarding climate change. Gabby sees herself as an extension of her community, a reflection of the cultures and experiences that have shaped her. Her journey has taught her not only to collaborate, but also to celebrate the uniqueness of others. Equipped with the knowledge she has gained from her current affairs, she is enthusiastic about bringing her proactive approach and commitment to positive change in her college community. She's eager to contribute, celebrate, and continue advocating, advocating for transformation. Congratulations, Gabby.
Congratulations, Gabby. Do we have Gabby's friends and family here in the audience? I know we have some friends up here, but. Congratulations.
Petaluma High School is also proud to present Drake Schumaker as student of the month. Drake Schumaker is a senior at Petaluma High School. His commitment to his academic studies reflect his dedication to being successful, and all that comes his way. Throughout his four years, he has many accomplishments that he is proud of. He's dedicated his time to completing over 100 hours of community service. As an alumni of Grant School, his favorite volunteering opportunity was helping both the teachers and students with various school project preparations. He's been an active member of the ASB class for all four years of high school and serves as the current ASB vice president this year, which includes the monthly board meeting presentations with all of you. He has also participated as a link crew leader going into his junior year and was a member of the FFA his sophomore and junior year. Outside of school, he enjoys baking, cooking, and spending time with his family and friends. After graduating from high school, he plans to continue his education at the SRJC with hopes to transfer to Sonoma State to study interior design and to take courses to become a licensed real estate agent. His family is very proud of him and is excited to see what his future brings. He wants to thank his family for teaching him to never give up and to follow his passions. He also wants to thank his family for teaching him how to work hard. He would like to encourage his fellow classmates to never give up, and that the hard work pays off. Congratulations, Drake.
Congratulations, Drake. Do we have Drake's friends and family here? I know we do, yeah. I thought so. Congratulations again, Gabby and Drake. Awesome. And last, but certainly not least, we have Petaluma Accelerated Charter School.
Rosio is an extremely hard-working and driven student. The careful thought and consideration she puts into her work is noticeable in all that she does. Rosio's passit- passion for learning is evident as she is constantly pushing her own limits to produce work that is not only complete, but thorough in detailed text evidence, organization, and structure. Rosio's writing is exemplary. Her unique style and voice captivate her readers in a way that inspires, leaving us all with a desire to hear more. In addition, her artistic ability also stands out and complements her other work in a way that allows her to express her learning while showing what she knows in various mediums. Rosio is not only a considered academic student, but she is a kind and cooperative friend to her peers. She is always welcoming to others, eager to support her peers in everything from schoolwork to developing friendships. Her calm demeanor makes her easily approachable and a pleasure to work with, either in partners or small groups. Rosio's parents shared that she has always enjoyed school, homework, and projects. She has always been dedicated and responsible for learning and having knowledge. She works very hard every day and feels satisfied when she has her grades, which drives her to continue. She has their full support as a student and as a daughter, and they do what is necessary for her to feel satisfied in her work. Her mother, her sister, and I are very proud of her. We are honored to award Rosio with PAC Student of the Month of the semester. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rosio. Do we have Rosio's friends and family in the audience? Can you stand up so we can congratulate you?
Anchul is a very eager and willing student. She has a passion for all subjects that clearly shines through with her 4.0 GPA. She is one who self-advocates for her learning and isn't bothered by the extra time or steps it may take to understand a topic. Anchul is part of the PAC's band and takes a food science course on top of her core classes. She truly loves learning. Anchul strives to be involved in the community by serving volunteer hours at Petaluma Bounty. Her presence on campus is always positive, and we can count on her to be a helping hand or friend to anyone in need. Anchul's past teachers expressed that she is an exceptional student who always went above and beyond to produce quality work. Anchul's all-around, all-around attitude is one that stands out on a middle school campus for being reliable, dedicated, and kind. Anchul's parents shared, Anchul has been a talented student from, from her toddler age. When she migrated to the US at the age of three, she was not able to speak English at all. We were worried that she would not be able to catch up on her studies and adjust to the new environment. I believe she was mentally prepared for the challenge and understood what was needed to overcome that. Within a month, she was able to catch up with her class. She is a confident girl. Academically, she knows all subjects are equally important, and it is obvious by her A's in all the subjects. All class teachers until now have given great feedback, feedback about her, and in fact, she was recommended to skip fourth grade and enroll in fifth grade directly as her teacher found her mature enough and academically fit for fifth grade. Also, at this tender age, she is socially aware and participates in several voluntary programs that help our neighborhood in many ways, from mom and dad. Congratulations, Anchul. We are so thankful to have you as a student at PACS.
Congratulations, Anchul. Do we have Anchul's friends and family? I thought I saw you all in the back. Congratulations. All right, we're gonna take a picture of all of the students of the month in the semester together and take a five-minute break.
A great school. Caring for the whole child. Expanding the horizons of learning.
Mute and then play.
Building relationships with families. Working together to realize a shared vision. This is the school every student needs. This is a community school. Community schools are public schools that partner with stakeholders to create the conditions students need to thrive.
I'm gonna leave and restart my computer to see if that.
Oh, wait, hold on. Okay. I got in the wrong. Like this, there's no sound output on mine in one second.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then you wanna bring, okay, you better, they're joining, because that's not a lot to do, same thing. Yeah, play V with audio. No, you should, um, you still wanna control the meeting.
All right, I'm gonna ask everybody to find their seats. Finish up their conversations. I will use the gavel if I have to, Madeline Cloud. I will use the gavel.
You have to anyway, right?
Yeah. Well, I'll wait, I'll wait till she's sitting down. Oh, no, you're good.
Well, and Philip wasn't here either.
I know, I know, I said, all right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order at 6:45. And we are perfect. We can take a second. All right, I think we are ready for our December site report jointly from Petaluma and Casa Grande High from our students of the month. Could we be any luckier? I'm so excited.
Jaden for presenting student of the month. I appreciate it. Okay, so, we are doing a joint presentation again tonight. So, I forgot that I have to click through the slides. Um. I'm gonna be honest, I have no idea. Okay, perfect. Okay, so, first up is a Halloween costume contest dating back to October 31st. So, quite a while ago. Um, it was held during lunch, and it was great to see everybody dressed up in their costumes. And then, there were more pictures to this one, they just didn't add, so sadly, we'll just have to work with that one. But Petaluma High School held an all-you-can-eat pancake breakfast, and it was a hit, led by Gabby Trave, the senior class president and student of the month. Uh, we raised a total of $729, and then all proceeds are going to help with prom. And then, next up, we have club of the month for November. So, ASB awarded a astronomy club for all that they have recently done. The recent efforts of fundraising $300 for the trip to the planetarium in San Francisco. They also participated in the holiday market by selling baked goods, ornaments, and clay figures. So, congratulations to them. And then, we have, um, we'd like to give a business department spotlight. So, Ms. Lowell, who has been a part of the business department, facilitated the holiday market this year. This was the first time it was brought back since the year 2018 to 2019, so quite a while ago. Uh, not only was the holiday market a great way to build a better community by supporting each other, but it was also a great opportunity for clubs to fundraise and reach their goals. Ms. Lowell coordinates the Troy Shop, ran during break by the entrepreneurship class. She is also a club advisor and a WASC coordinator. So, thank you, Ms. Lowell, for everything that you do. And then, we have the holiday market. So, again, the holiday market has. And then, we have the holiday market. So, again, the holiday market hasn't been open since the year 2018 to 2019. And for it being its first year back, it was a great success. Uh, the hallways were packed with people lining up to help support each other in all the clubs, so that was great to see. It was very busy to get through, especially to get to your class. It was insane. And then, we have our annual tradition. ASB and Petaluma High School partnered with Unavida for Holiday Cheer. For those of you who do not know what Holiday Cheer is, it's when you partner with a nonprofit organization and ask students or teachers to bring in supplies for people in need. So, those up there are the items that we selected that were necessities for people in need. And then, along with them is a point system, so every second period, we would go into each class and count up how many points there were. And the winner with the most points gets a donut party, so we'd like to congratulate Mrs. Betty's Life Skill Class for winning the Holiday Cheer, and they will be receiving a donut party very soon, so that's really exciting. And then, okay, and then, next up is the 150th Community Mural. So, this was to celebrate the 150th anniversary of Petaluma High. One of Petaluma High School's goals is to make a strong community. This was a great way to bring out the creative side in everyone who participated, and there were a lot of participants in this. That was really good to see. Um, we'd also like to thank everyone who helped design this, because it makes the school definitely look like a better place with a great community. Um, and then, we will also be reaching out to the metal class to hopefully make a plaque for the mural with information on it. And then, Bite of Reality, which I believe happened, I wanna say like two weeks ago, and it was coordinated by Mrs. Dodsworth. Um, and it was for the senior class students to get a taste of real-life situations after high school with a yearly budget and all the adult responsibilities that will be coming our way very soon. So, thank you, Ms. Dodsworth, for making that happen. And then, just this past weekend, on Sunday, on the 10th, Petaluma City Schools and Relief partnered together to bring more greenscape to the Petaluma High School environment. The Environmental Club volunteered to help make this happen by planting 60 trees and shrubs around the perimeter of campus. So, here are some pictures from the event. The campus definitely looks a lot better, so that's great. And then, here's Casa.
Okay, so, recently, about like a month ago, we had our haunted homecoming. And for homecoming, we celebrated with a parade, rally, and dance. For the parade, we had about 24 clubs participate, and 16 of them had a candidate for homecoming royalty, and that was really cool. And then, for our rally, we had a double rally where we did the first one with half the school and the second one with the second half. And the band and cheer performed in it. Uh, ASB did games, like tug-of-war and musical chairs for everyone to stay involved, and there was a lot of interesting things for people to participate in. Um, and lastly, we had the homecoming dance. 751 students attended and enjoyed all-inclusive night with games and a photo booth dancing and a food truck, which was free of charge, and it was a very fun way for everyone to get together and celebrate. So, one thing that's been going on is salmon monitoring. Um, our school, our hatchery catches Chinook salmon in the Petaluma River, and they measure the fish and take a DNA sample to test the genetic diversity. And this year, they tested 34 fish. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had Wellness Week, which was a week kinda just to bring everyone together and kind of have everyone relax before finals are coming up. So, first, we had Mug Monday, we had Snack Station Tuesday, and then more days for the whole entire week, and we have, yeah, Play With Puppies. Uh, one of the teachers, our biology, or, yeah, biology teacher, she has puppies that she brings in every year and does biology labs on them, so it was really cool. Not like bad ones. Like, they take like measurements of the puppies and track their growth. And the experiments. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Sorry, guys, I wasn't supposed to be the speaker, so I found out when I got here. Okay, so, we also have Big House Culture. Uh, at Casa, we value inclusivity and engagement, and our ASB works in cooperation with other groups and clubs to create a positive campus culture to give the student body opportunities to be involved and unite everyone together as gauchos. So, some of these activities that we've had going on are Halloween activities, school spirit days for people to get involved, and a staff appreciation to show that we care about our staff and the people that work hard for us. Um, a big event that happened recently was Egg Bowl. Um, we won, Casa won, Port and Part. But it was really cool. Everyone came together and had a lot of school spirit together, and it kept a positive environment the entire time, so it went really well and smoothly. Um, we also had 8th grade tours going on these past week. I think this past week, um, at Casa, we had Cherry Valley, PAX, Kennerworth attend, and we had three days of tours where several students, um, from different grades, uh, led the students around campus and taught them about what was going on. And they also got to enjoy a rally, and here's some new information. Do you wanna do Petaluma?
Thank you. Okay, also, recently, we also had 8th grade tours, which was a two-day event led by our fabulous link crew leaders. Around 400 people showed up and attended this event from the schools Cherry Valley, PAX, and Petaluma Junior High School. So, fingers crossed, we're hoping for more enrollment for the upcoming year. And then, winter sports. I believe both Petaluma and Casa have the exact same winter sports going on. So, we have wrestling, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, girls' soccer, and boys' soccer. And they've already started. We're off to a great start, and we're excited to see the rest of the season. And then, this year, we're presenting something new for both Casa and Petaluma. Similar to Student of the Month, we are gonna be doing a staff feature for all the staff members who make the school a better place. So, Petaluma chose Megan McClelland for all the hard work that she puts into the school community. She is the lead school counselor and also serves as co-director in ASB. She involves herself in many extracurriculars to make the Petaluma community united. Congratulations to Ms. McClelland.
Um, at Casa, we have Ms. Boyce. Uh, she teaches honors chemistry, and she always participates in school and shows her school spirit, so that's why she was selected. Um, congratulations, Ms. Boyce.
Okay, and then, oh wait, you can, I'll let you do yours first, if you'd like.
So, coming up for Casa, there's a holiday fair coming up, I think, next week for gearing up for finals. There's also Winter Spirit Week and a Welcome Back Rally that week. Or after the break.
My bad, I got a little carried away. I was getting into it. Okay. So, for Petaluma, we have the Marine Biology Field Trip to Monterey on January 24th. And then, the Winter Ball Planning, even though it's gonna be in February, we definitely need to plan ahead, because that's gonna be right around the corner. And then, there's an FFA Field Trip that I currently don't have the specific date for, but I believe it's going to be a state conference. And then, there is going to be a Grade Level Assembly on the topic of inclusivity at the beginning of January. And that is it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you both. Great. Thank you all for reporting and for doing it as a dream team. Next up, we'll move on to our Shared Decision Making Presentation.
So, the, the next two presentations are presentations that happened, I'll let you explain, but happened at all the school sites by, typically by October 31st. And the first one here is with Jason and Sandra.
There we go. So, um, every year, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and the PFT President visit all of the schools and discuss shared decision-making. And so, this year, we wanted to come and share with you what we were presenting to staff. And Sandra and I have done it. This is our third year together. Uh, one thing that when we start, I always share with staff is that even though we come every year, and we do this every year, it shouldn't be thought of as routine. Like, we don't do this because we have to. We come and do these presentations because shared decision-making is a very important part of the culture of our district, and we present it every year because it is important.
And a little bit of the history, in the 1980s, way back in then, we were having trouble labor and district working well together. And so, Gary Rivani and Chuck Cadman, two people who had great influence on our district in the past, got together, they got a national grant to work on a new way that we would work with each other. Shared decision-making was born of that. Um, they received a national recognition for that, and in 1989, it went into our contract, and it's been there how long, Jason?
Yeah.
I always like to point out, like, that's a long time. Like, that's like 35 years. And I, and we always point out that, like, it didn't happen on accident, and it hasn't stayed in our district on accident. It's here because it serves a very important purpose. And what is that purpose? Like, why do we have shared decision-making? And this is right out of our Shared Decision Making Guide. And in kind of simple language, it, it's a way for us to have common language and common strategies to work together and collaborate around the complex process of making hard decisions.
Sometimes I step on his line, so I'm gonna try to be really careful this time.
You're good.
Decisions are made. He moves the slides around sometimes just to mess with me. Um, decisions are made in many different venues. We always say, any decision is a what?
There, yeah. That's coming up, though.
Basically, anywhere that a decision is made, we need to use shared decision-making.
Yeah. So, in the guide, this is really the heart of the shared decision-making model, that there's, there's three, three decision-making models. Starting at the far-right, Command is administrator alone, and those are usually decisions that are made around safety issues or legal, legal issues. And an important part of that is that they aren't just made, but those decisions are made, and they're explained and shared with staff. The middle one is consultation. This is a decision where staff input is gathered and considered and reviewed and discussed, and then, the administrator would have a final, make the final decision after gathering all that information and sharing back to staff what decision was made. And then, finally, on the far-left, consensus is all stakeholders are equal parts and members in the decision-making process, and we're working to reach consensus in this model.
And the important part about all of these models is the communication around the decision and why it was made.
Do you wanna talk about moving left?
Yeah, and this is really the heart of the shared decision-making model. Staffs have to have to decide and agree on the model that you're using. So, that has to be, before you can go any further, we all have to agree, agree this is a consult or command or a consensus. That's really the heart of the whole.
So, we have a couple of important points for you. So, important, you did a little, it's alright, we're still here. Um, so, important point number one. So, we often hear people say, well, is this really a shared decision? You know, is every decision that we make in our district or at our school sites is a shared decision? There's not a single decision that we make that doesn't fall into one of three models. And so, we encourage staff, if you're wondering how shared decision-making was used, ask. Because every decision we make falls into one of those three models of decision-making.
And here's one of my favorite ones. It's possible to over, impossible to over-communicate. Communication is a key to making shared decision-making work. And my absolute favorite one, you can always go back and fix a mistake. If you say, how is shared decision-making used? Oh, I just made the decision. Okay, let's go back and fix it. And that's always possible to do, and we have seen that done very effectively.
Yeah. I mean, we often, when we're giving these presentations, we like to give very concrete examples, like examples from distance learning, and those, that process, examples from the bell schedule. Ordeal. You know, I mean, that was a great example of, of all three models, and we share that with staff, that, that it was a command decision from the state, that your minutes are wrong. That it was technically a consult decision that, that, that at the end of the day, scheduling is an administrative decision based on input, but that both schools were eventually able to make it through a consensus model, which we encourage staff, like, why would you not move to consensus when you can? And we encourage our principals, move to consensus whenever possible, because we want to work together to make our decisions. Most we have. Oh, we do have a Shared Decision Resource Guide that we update frequently. We have a new one that was just updated this last year, and it is on the website.
It's a living document. It's constantly changing.
So, we often will pull it up and share with staff some of the new stuff that was added this year, and we're bringing out some new posters based on the work of the Trust Committee, and...
Those are the members of the Trust Committee. We always tell staff, you too could come and join us. We meet four times a year to talk about shared decision-making, the ways it was used successfully, and any problems that we ran into.
And then, we take questions.
Yeah.
Just a, just a question about the Trust Committee. What, what is that, are they the one, I mean, what is their role in the Trust Committee? Do they take input from staff? And then, they're the ones that eat together, working consensus for all of them?
The way I describe it usually, when we talk about the Trust Committee, is I say, like, that this is the group that is the shepherd, they like, are shepherding the shared decision-making process in our district. Like, they're the stewards of shared decision-making. So, we talk about when shared decision-making is used well, when it, like, hey, that didn't go really well. What should we have done differently? And, and looking at the guide, like, we added the accordion process to the guide, because we use that in distance learning. We've, oh, we need to go back and forth, so we added that to the guide. We updated components of it. So, that's really how I see, I've always seen the function. Is there anything I'm missing, Sandra, on that?
No, I think it's, I was thinking like the shepherding group, so the members will come with something that worked well, or something that they, a member has talked to them about that didn't work well, and how could we have handled that differently? Sure, anyone could come. You're all invited, no.
We'll add their name to the list. You can be famous in our presentation as well. Any other questions?
Yeah, I might have missed it on the slide. I didn't see anyone from like CSEA or Certificated. Okay, yeah, is, how involved is CSEA in this?
CSEA hasn't been involved in this in the past. I, I mean, the, the shared decision-making was an agreement between PFT and the district. We try and use shared decision-making in, you know, in the way we do business, but, but contractually, it's, it's a, it's in the PFT contract.
Okay.
And I don't know of another contract that has that in. When I'm traveling, like, I'm with CFT, other big unions we had talked about, like, oh, yeah, we have shared decision-making, have to sort of explain it. So, I think it's pretty unique to Petaluma, which is a nice thing to have.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna see if they have any.
This is great. I mean, I, the process is so important, and it makes it harder in the short run, but better in the long run. So, I really appreciate that you shared this. I'm wondering if the communication includes to the students, because shared governance and shared decision-making is a wonderful model of democracy in action. This could be a really good, um, teaching opportunity at our secondary schools to, when something like a bell schedule is decided in collaborative manner, explaining it to the students that this is, this is the long process we took, this is all the input we got in order to come to a conclusion. Does that happen, and, and, and can it happen?
So, I'll answer the second question first. It can happen. I think that, 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 like, you, you're mentioning the bell schedule, for example, like, that bringing student and parent input and voice is, is part of the, gonna be part of the process. It's not specifically part of shared decision-making. And kind of similar to Caitlin's question, that doesn't mean that it can't, it can't be included. It, it hasn't been. But the input, the, it's something to think about, and definitely, the, the input is something that we strive to, you know, with the bell schedule, I know, working with the team on that. That's been a consistent discussion. How do we get more input and involve more people in the process?
How was this committee originally put together? Like, how were these folks chosen? I believe, and someone from 1987 or whatever it started, I believe it started out with always the PFT president, the superintendent, and then, um, just volunteers from other sites that were willing to do it. In recent year, we always asked the chief negotiator to join as well, and he's been happy to do that, so. I don't know how the district chose.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the district chose. These are the people that have been on it in the past, seem to be often working with it. But we do, when we go to the sites, we invite everybody to come to all of our meetings. You're welcome to come. You're welcome to join the group. Yeah.
If there's. Often, once teachers are on, our members, they stay on. There's some people have been on there as long as I have.
I'd love if we ever think about, or if you ever, sorry, expand in the group to have like. More diverse voices up there. Yeah.
Do you mean like from like similar to what, what we're hearing about, like, like students and, and CSEA as well as, or?
No, like literally more diversity on the committee.
Within the membership on that committee. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think it sounds like we would all like to see. That it's a great model that we have with PFT. It's so cool that we've been doing it for that long. It would be cool to explore doing it with our other union and finding a way to like officially. Do it with students, whether it's the elected student board members or the ASB who are elected. I know it's a little harder to officially. Engage with students, but there are bodies that are elected by their peers. So. Yeah, but I thank you both for the presentation. I think I'm the one that requested this because I wanted to see what teachers are seeing. Every year and what they're hearing. Because we need the same shared understanding of what shared decision making is, because I think some of us have been hearing it about it for five years. And this is the first time we actually got the presentation. So thank you both.
Thank you.
This also for me, I just, sorry, don't want to step on the new president's toes. People like all the time were like, your district seems so healthy, like what is, I just think this is probably a huge reason why. Because of the shared decision making model. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we always stress that any decision can get to consensus. If you give a staff long enough or a group long enough to work in it, they'll all come to a agreement because we all want what's best for our students.
Yeah. Great. Thank you all. And on the same vein, another presentation that our staff gets, I think every year, the safe classrooms presentation.
Yes, thank you so much. I travel on the road show, or I started to in September with Jason and with Sandra. And my focus is updating teachers annually about their rights related to student discipline and providing some background. On our philosophy and our approaches around PBIS and some of our data. So. Just a reminder to everyone that we continue to build our PBIS and restorative practices work within our district. And as we approach our. Approach behavior in general in our district, we're looking at this three tier model. And so we've spent a bulk of our time working on that tier one approach and building our explicit. Expectations at all of our school sites, positive reinforcement, building relationships and expanding. That relationship building through classroom circles and community building. And then in tier two, many of our, of our sites have little pilot groups, site teams that are working now on tier two. So when those approaches aren't working for eighty, ninety to ninety percent of the students. What is our response for that ten to fifteen percent? And that's some of the work that we're doing with Laura Moiman this year. Continuing to reinforce our tier one, build that out and beginning to layer on tier two. And then we know that for three to five percent of our student body, they need more, so more wraparound services. Individualized counseling, behavior support plans, functional behavior assessments. And so we know that we, that we operate within this three tier model. When we are looking, are looking at behavior referrals, we have sort of the minor bucket where, you know, teachers are always working with students. And responding to behavior in the classroom and redirecting and, and providing those supports in the moment, always. And then we have those major behaviors where they, they're made, the student may need another. Another area or more support, whether that be with an administrator or a student advisor. And so we have those major behaviors that are then referred to administration to look at and problem solve. This is our suspension data from twenty two, twenty three. And. Move this, actually, my apologies. And we have the number of incidents, the number of students, the total number of suspension days, and then the rate. For each school site. And so we have this here for our seven elementary sites. And then we have the suspension data for our secondary sites. And then we also share the demographic information for that. Later on in, I believe in January, when the dashboard comes out, we're going to be able to do some comparison. And see how we are increasing or decreasing as we look at comparing to school years consecutively. And we'll be able to look at that by our student demographic groups as well. So we show this to our, to our staffs.
Is Marilda?
Yes.
Really quickly, what the rate, I can't figure out what the ratio is.
It's the number of incidents to the total enrollment. Yeah. And then the.
Can I ask a?
Yeah.
Question about that last slide. So this is a presentation that you give to the staff at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Is there any talk at all about like, maybe coming back to this at some point mid-year? Like reexamining some of this because these suspension rates are just so. Out of whack, just like the students of color being suspended in comparison to the population on the campus.
Yeah. So part of the work that we're doing with administrators is providing them some, some time within our administrative meetings to be able to dive into some of the demographics. Looking at who the students are that are being suspended as well. So doing a little bit more of a deep dive. And then the idea is that then our administrators can go back in with their individual staffs and do some more of that work ongoingly. In this particular presentation, it's kind of just a sort of quick overview. But we share this information. I shared updated in my original presentation, there was some errors in the data, but. I resent out this data in particular because there was some inconsistencies with the demographics. And so there are many teachers that were really interested in the demographics and want to talk about that, too. So the idea is that we can have those deeper dive conversations at the site level as well, to your point, Joanna, because it's really important. In terms of notifying teachers about previous history, the safe schools, previous discipline history for a student. So back in nineteen ninety three, I believe, the Safe Schools Act came about, which basically was ed code. Requiring us to notify teachers for up to three years that there is a flag. And they're, they're informed about any infractions that violated the Safe Schools Act, in particular ed code violations. And so some of this with our teachers, we found that there was some inconsistencies and, and just the way that students were being flagged and a little bit of wonkiness surrounding it. And I know that Jason has been working with. Our Aries technicians around making sure that there's simple, very streamlined ways of providing that information to teachers. And so that's, those have been some of the discussions this year and that we're trying to clean up and in terms of note of. Meeting this requirement around ed code forty nine zero seven nine.
As Marilda on that. It's flag SSA. This is what you see. So does it break down what the infractions are or what the discipline was or what the, what the, whatever happened?
For the teachers, they would have access.
Would have that all down?
Right. Okay, yeah. Okay. And then there's, teachers are also notified about their right to, to respond to particular behaviors. If they are a violation of ed code, that they do, they do have a right to suspend for the day of an infraction and the following day. Provided that they follow certain guidelines, which is holding a parent teacher conference. Making sure that they are communicating the reasoning and rationale for that particular suspension. But that is one of their rights as teachers to be able to enact that suspension. Of course, our, we're, we're working on making sure that we are always following other means of correction. But informing teachers that they do have that right and explaining to them what that ed code, what that requirement is, should they decide to invoke that right? The following slides have. All the ed code information. And so I share this slide deck with the, the principal so they can forward it on to their staff. But there's a lot of text. I don't need to go through all of that, but I do share that it is in the presentation for staff so they can go through and read particular. Ed code around their rights and responsibilities. And then the other piece that's shared with the staff is, you know, they are. Entitled, as the students are, to a very, to a safe, physically safe environment. So if there's anything in the classroom related to facilities that needs to be addressed. Ceiling tiles, you know, any kind of safety concerns that those be communicated directly to their administrator. And that we have a quick turnaround time and working with maintenance and operations to adequately deal with those concerns. And so that's another piece of the provisions of a safe classroom. Talk that I give. So. That's essentially what I share at every, at every staff meeting in the fall. And I do have some schools that I need to make up. There was a little bit of a lag time between my day and night. So she started and then I picked up, but there's about three schools that I need to go back and make up. So I'll be sure to work with those principals in doing that. Any questions? Yeah, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to switch.
Oh, I think we have a question. Oh, yeah, sure.
I actually have a couple of questions. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I was wondering if there's some sort of like rules like this for like. Outside of the classroom, like just on campus, like provisions of like how to keep a safe campus, like bathrooms, hallways, like. Things in the quad or like the black top or something like that.
Great question, Jayden. That would be a part of the tier one where schools are. Part of their PBIS approach is making sure that students are aware of what the expectations are in the different areas of the school. And there's a lot of work that staffs need to do in order to come to consensus on what, you know, what are those guidelines? And then the teaching aspect of that. And I know that we're evolving and we're, you know, at the, at the comprehensive secondary sites. That's when you've got eighteen hundred students or twelve hundred students, that can be quite the feat. But I know that our administrative teams are continuing to, to work on that so that. You all know as students what those expectations are and that those are being followed up on.
And then also I was wondering, like, where does things like homophobia or racism fall under like the minor or major category for like? When they're dealing with these reports?
Yeah. So racial slurs. When we get into like Title VI violations or protected classes, those can be considered major because they're under harassment, threats and intimidation. And so those are areas that are, are, our teams need to investigate and properly deal with.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then also my last question is, well, it's not really a question, but I feel like it would just be. Interesting if we also had another column for data on how many of these incidents are actually followed up with. Because I feel like one of the issues at my school is like, there's unresolved reports. So I'm just curious about like. How many of these incidents? Because I'm, I'm assuming this includes like student reports, like student to student. So I'm just curious on how many, it would be also interesting to see how many are student to student versus student to teacher, things like that. I feel like those statistics would be really helpful.
And I know coming in early twenty twenty four, we'll be bringing a presentation together with our two high school administrators to, to provide some information directly on that topic, Jayden. So absolutely, we'll get some more information on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your questions.
I have a couple. Could you give us a sense of the, at the elementary school level, the behaviors that are leading to suspension?
So what we're looking at typically at the elementary level, the forty eight, nine hundred A portion, we tend to see, which is the. Threatened to cause harm, caused harm. So it's more of the physical aggression is what we tend to see later on. I think in the LCAP presentation of Lindsay will be sharing a little bit more around the top three reasons that represent our suspension data. And fighting is one of, one of those. And again, the, the conversations that I have with administrators is let's make sure that we're using a progressive discipline approach, other means of correction. And so by the time, if we get to suspension, it's because we have tried everything. And are, you know, are we holding those SSTs? Are we holding those IEP meetings? Are we, you know, wrapping the supports around our students? Because we need them in school. And so it's important that we're doing what we need to do to support them.
And I'm sorry, I hadn't gotten around to reading the fine, fine print on the presentation yet, but. Do we have expulsion data? I mean, I know we do at the secondary. Is there expulsion data at the elementary? I don't recall ever seeing.
No, I have not. No, I'm, I don't think.
It's not.
We're not seeing, that's not a thing for us in this district. Yeah, fortunately. Yeah, yeah, but I. Yeah, I can get our specific expulsion. That's not shared in here. Okay.
I mean, we see it all the time.
Yes, yes.
I, I don't recall ever seeing it at elementary and that's the reason why. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I have a question. Looking at the suspension data. What is the, like, if? I don't know how I'm gonna put this, the percentage. So if, for example, if there's a very high level of. H Hispanic. Suspensions higher than any others. I'm, I'm kind of curious as to what is the percentage of those students at the school? Is that? Is that an accurate percentage of compared to, we have these many white, this many. And this, so what, what are the percentages? And I don't know if I asked that question right, but.
I think, let me see if I, I, I think I can rephrase it. So you're wondering about the proportionality. So the percentage of, say, Latino students at a school overall, just their enrollment compared to their suspension rate.
Yes.
As representative of the school. Yes.
You put that so much better.
And the, the data doesn't reflect that, but we do have disproportionate suspensions to our, to our student enrollment, both at a district level. And then, but in some cases, not necessarily at the district level. So if you look at Grant, a hundred percent of the students that were suspended were white. And that mirrors their, the proportionality of white students. Right, right. So we, I'd have to go site by site. But I, my hunch and what I've seen over time is that it's disproportionate.
That's what I, yeah, that's the sense I got. So.
Correct.
You can look on the dashboard and look, I mean, I looked at, at the dashboard at all of these schools and I want to say just Grant and Cherry Valley were the ones that did not have disproportionate. So. Yeah. I would love to see another column on here when presenting and again, having it be revisited, like. You only have two black kids at Pengrove. Why are they two percent of the suspensions or there's only two black kids at McDowell with a thirty percent of the suspensions? Just to like, I don't know, just remind people about implicit bias and, you know, when you're sending students to the office, you really need to. And when you're suspending these students, do you really need to? But if they're getting to the three incidents so quickly, then, yeah, I just. It's just frustrating seeing this over and over again and same at the high school as well. So.
The Pengrove is so out of whack. I was just wondering if there was like a particular incident? I mean, it's twice as, more than twice as much as the other school that it's got twenty eight incidents. Would that account for it?
So the twenty, there's twenty incidents and eleven students. It could be that of those, those eleven students obviously represent the twenty eight. And so there could be multiple days. So the students may have been suspended more than just one day. And, you know, sometimes there may be spikes in suspension where. There may be something going on in one year and then that changes the following year. But that's, these are the things that we're needing to delve into and look closer at. And part of my conversations with administrators, when we're trouble, problem solving and figuring out other means of correction and, and surfacing those. Look, you know, talking about the big picture with every. talking about the big picture with every student, right? And their identities and what's happening is all part of the conversation.
All right, any other questions? I definitely think we'll want an update on suspension next semester. And even if we could just look at this semester and if things are improving in terms of proportionality or if they're getting worse or what's, what's going on. And also not just proportionality, because even if we're suspending everybody at a higher rate, that's not great either.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna move to the podium with Molly. Provide an update on community schools and wellness centers. And so I have Molly Nagel, our coordinator of community schools, who has been um taking the lead with this work. And we are excited to share some of what has been going on in this realm.
Okay, good morning, board members and everyone who is present. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to present information about community schools and wellness centers with Esmeralda. As community schools have evolved, uh, there are two common descriptions to help define them. So it should be the next slide. Oh, okay, oh, sorry. Okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna show the video uh on community schools.
What makes a school a great school? Character of a whole child. Expanding the horizons of learning. Building relationships with families. Working together to realize a shared vision. This is the school every student needs. This is a community school. Community schools are public schools that partner with stakeholders to create the conditions students need to thrive. Community schools can be found across the United States and their numbers are growing fast. But what exactly makes a school a community school? They integrate student supports. Clinics, counselors and other services ensure each and every student is ready to learn. They expand and enrich learning. Extended school days, summer programs and real-world experiences help students reach their full potential. They engage families and communities. Partnering with residents to identify and meet community needs makes everyone feel safe, welcome and involved in school. They lead in collaboration. Inclusive decision-making and peer learning builds trust among students, educators, families and communities. When a school stands on these four pillars, it's a community school. Research supports this four-pillar approach, but there's no one size fits all model. Every community school is different because each community is different. Figuring out what it looks like in your community starts by getting actual community members involved. That's the full-time job of community school coordinators. They're the human bridge connecting all the partners and stakeholders that make community schools possible. So that's what makes a school a community school. Now, how do you pay for it? Startup costs like hiring a full-time coordinator can be raised by foundations or state and local governments. Tapping into existing funding and partnering with local businesses can bring in service providers. Sharing resources and staff with partners can help everyone do more. And as a community school becomes more established, leaders can advocate for budgets that sustain their impact and new funding to expand it. Every community school is different. What will yours be like? Get started at communiteschools.putcherforlearning.org.
So community schools are public schools that partner with families and community organizations. I think that's the pivotal part. That is to provide well-rounded educational opportunities and supports for students' school success. Community schools must be built on a foundation of powerful teaching that includes challenging academic content and supports students' mastery of twenty-first century skills and competencies. In this definition, uh, community schools are really thought of, of hubs where um supports and services could be provided to students and families. It's been expanded um that community schools uh are a strategy that transforms schools into a place where educators, local community members, families and students work together to strengthen those conditions for student learning and healthy development. As partners, they organize in and out of school resources, supports and opportunities so that young people thrive. So the focus on community schools is a core element of an equity strategy. The, they were talking about the four pillars and I just wanna go a little bit more in depth with that. So the first pillar is integrated student supports. So those are examples of maybe having a health clinic or a mobile health clinic, uh, go to the site. Additional uh mental health counseling, tutoring, um, supports and services for families such as parent education classes, housing assistant and nutrition programs. The pillar number two is um expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities. That is typically before and after school and in summer. It could be um the Boys and Girls Club, Teen Center, Summer Enrichment, um, physical activities such as sports, art, small group and individualized academic support and hands-on learning experiences are just a couple, a few examples. The third pillar is active family and community engagement. It's based on trust and respect. This is a really important one because this is where, you know, families and communities uh members are part of the school's decision-making process. Uh, so it's based on trust and respect, creating powerful decision-making processes, leveraging local resources to address inequities. Uh, meaningful and ongoing engagement of family and community members are prioritized. Uh, family and community members are, feel welcome, supported and valued as essential partners. Petaluma City Schools, I feel as, we're so blessed to uh have such amazing community partners. We partner with the city of Petaluma, Healthy Petaluma, Blue Zones, Petaluma People Services has ninety-plus programs, Sonoma State, um, you know, and that's just to name a few. And then the last one is the collaborative leadership and uh practices. That's pillar four. It's the relational glue that connects and reinforces all the pillars. Uh, the community school leverages the collective expertise of its stakeholders and collaborative leadership and practices are central to the work of all the staff at that school site. So um, I do wanna um just let you know that as we're discussing community schools and wellness centers, that they're actually not the same thing. But, you know, when you have a community school, especially at the secondary level, there will be typically a very robust wellness center as part of that.
So we wanted to share a little bit about um wellness centers. Again, another, can be another component of a community school or can also be a standalone. And we have a quick video for that, Ryan, if you could click on the link, please.
The American Academy of Pediatrics has declared a national emergency in child and adolescent health. Most young people who have mental health issues are not in treatment and not getting the care that they need. And what we also know is that seventy percent of youth who do receive mental health services receive it at school. So we need to be sure to build systems and structures to support students receiving that care in a school environment. TUHSD prioritized mental health and built wellness centers on each of our school campuses. Adolescents can't focus on learning if they're struggling with their mental health. I think the fact that we prioritize wellness centers in the Tam District communicates a message to our young people that their mental health is a priority and it matters. I think it normalizes conversations about mental health. A wellness center is a space on a school campus that provides health, mental health, substance use and sexual health services on campus. We provide both prevention and education as well as intervention services for youth at school. Wellness centers are as successful as the staff who run them and the students that participate in them. We have our wellness outreach specialist who meets everyone with a smile, like a warm face, and helps them triage to figure out what they might really need. There's also the wellness coordinator, and I'm gonna throw in there the other wellness providers. If a student really does need more one-on-one support or they're in crisis, there are licensed and pre-licensed professionals who are there to help them. Those relationships, the environment that they build is everything to make a law school more successful. Students often step through the door because we've made it such an accessible and comforting environment.
Wellness center in one word would probably be welcoming. Whenever I walk in, everyone's so positive, no matter what, what the thing you're coming in for is. Sometimes when you're not having the best day, to come in, see other people who are positive.
The wellness center model is a three-tiered system of intervention, universal for all students, for some or targeted groups and for some of the ISB students. And we provide all three tiers. We have our self-regulation tools. Um, a lot of these are art-based because we do know that art is calming. And then we also have the wellness toolbox, which if you look on the wall of each of the wellness centers, you will see the wellness toolbox that talks about sort of different areas that can help students with regulation. So it has a thing about mindfulness, connection, movement, all the things that we know that if you're taking care of those things regularly are gonna support you. We also have our area for tea and it sounds a little bit silly, but if you're having a hard day, even just holding a warm cup of something is surprisingly soothing. See that the environment that they're trying to create caters to so many students and that like environment, the goal is just safety. And whatever that means for any student, I can see that like presented with these really popular. Because we have high expectations and high support in the wellness center, we have the trust of teachers. They know that our priority is to take care of students' well-being and emotional health and get them back into class. We're changing student lives each and every day. We're helping young people be able to focus on their work. We're helping young people address mental health needs immediately when they need them. Also helping them people develop coding skills to support their mental health as they move into adulthood and throughout the rest of, you know, their adult lives. I'm so grateful to TUHSD leadership for bringing wellness centers on campuses because wellness works.
One of the things we also wanted to highlight is um some of the costs associated with wellness centers. Um, when it, we're looking at a wellness coordinator, um, inclusive of salary and benefits. These are some estimates along with a wellness outreach specialist. You can see what the dollar amount is um per school. For junior highs, the approach would be more of a tier one. So it would be that wellness outreach specialist um versus the comprehensive high schools that would offer the three-tiered approach.
So um, in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, last year, um, the district applied for and was awarded the two-year community schools uh partnership program planning grant for the secondary district. This year, we're gathering data, um, doing, you know, those assets and mapping and needs assessments, um, surveys. And so we're doing all the work to be, um, to uh apply for implementation grants for the schools that qualify. Next slide. I do wanna just add that why, there's a lot of competition for these grants and so there's no guarantee. But um, you know, I'm very hopeful. So part of our asset mapping and needs assessments, um, we've conducted some community forums, attended um site council meetings, doing staff, staff and parent and student surveys, building relationships with uh the community, um, attending ELAC, um, staff meetings. Uh, we have a district advisory council, um, and a site advisory council at McDowell. I'm attending a community partnership committee on some of the committees, um, and then just gathering data and feedback. Okay, so what we're doing and, and as part of the next steps, we're continuing to work the school sites who are eligible for the implementation grant funding, continuing to build these partnerships with the, in the community. So the, the point of today's presentation is to inform you about community schools and wellness centers. At the next meeting in January, um, it will be, I think, at the January thirtieth meeting. We're hoping to get approval from the board to move forward to apply for the implementation grant. And, and then there'll, there'll be a, a presentation of the grant, a for consent.
Molly, what, what school sites are eligible? What makes a school site eligible?
So what makes the district eligible is an unduplicated pupil count of fifty percent. If your elementary district or secondary district are not at fifty percent, a school site could make the LEA eligible. So right now we have San Antonio and McDowell.
So as, as a district, we don't qualify quite. We're getting closer and closer to that fifty percent number, but we're not there yet. But we have two schools that do qualify. On the wellness centers that you talked about, how have you seen or have you seen how other districts have funded those?
Yes, so um, so in the video, that was actually Tam District, that was Redwood High School. I went to Redwood High School. We did not have a wellness center there at the time. And so they're a basic aid district, um, so there's a lot of funding that, that comes into their district. So there are many districts that get the funding from the implementation grants. There are other uh ways that they can be funded. Sometimes people use Medi-Cal money, um, that can come in through um LEA billing. And that's been expanded in, in twenty twenty. So that's something that, um, Esmeralda and I can look at um as well. Uh, you know, there could be some, you know, private donations as well. So there's a variety of ways that could be funded.
I'm not hearing general fund though. I mean, it seems like that's um, I mean, it seems like that should be explored, right? This is, uh, the way I see it, it's not, it's not ancillary, it's uh, it's co-curricular, it's, you know.
I will also share that um part of the strategy um that I'll be working on with, so we have, Petaluma is pretty uniquely positioned in that we have so many trainees and um our district guidance um coordinators are, you know, providing, overseeing so many of these individuals who are providing services. And so um really thinking strategically with that team around how, how do we do some tweaking? How do we look at the infrastructure that we currently have? If we are in this place where we don't have full funding, but how do we organize ourselves in such a way that gets us a little bit closer to this model? And so that will be work that I will be doing with the team because we already have, you know, such a robust offering in terms of mental health um and trainees and partnerships with universities. And so how do we leverage those in a really strategic manner so that we can get closer to that model?
So if I'm understanding correctly, the community schools grant could really only go to McDowell and/or San Antonio. So, yeah, I guess, how much money would that be if we were to get both or either of them? And then I don't see how, how those could possibly fund wellness centers at other schools.
So um, at McDowell, it, it's uh two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the first four years and then two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand for the fifth year and then a hundred thousand for the year six and seven. At San Antonio, it's less, it's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the first four years. I think it's a hundred-and-twelve-thousand for the fifth year and then a hundred thousand for year six and seven. And it's always based on the, what the needs are. So McDowell's needs are gonna be different than San Antonio's needs. Community schools have been created uh with, without funding at, at all. It's really about making sure that we leverage those partnerships. We have, you know, Petaluma People Services, we have Sonoma State, we have Dominican. There's a lot of ways, as, as Meralda was saying, um, to, to get that happening. So, and then we have the health clinic, so that, you know, helps with the physical health um at our high schools. And we are working right now to get um a health center over at Petaluma High School. We're working with the food bank to get the food bank on the west side. So we're still continuing those partnerships and, you know, the schools are interested in becoming community schools. So it's really just, you know, looking at all the avenues that we have available to us. If we can't get, you know, necessarily the money, um, you know, to hire a wellness coordinator right away. But um, you know, at Kennelworth and at Petaluma Junior, we are launching, soft-launching wellness centers because we're doing a tier one model there. And so we, we do get grants from PEF. And um, so that's gonna happen this year in March or April. We're gonna do a soft launch at the two junior highs. And so that's gonna happen this year in March or April. We're gonna do a soft launch at the two junior highs. So we're really excited about that.
Great.
Yeah, and I don't remember if they mentioned it in the video, but about 80% of the students who are seeing just require the tier one supports.
I just, you know, this all screams Blue Zones to me. So, and they, I think, have money. And they're supposed to be working in our community for building a healthy community, especially with mental health and nutrition and all, everything that a Wellness Center does. Is there, is there some, I mean, how would you see our ability to work with them and leverage them so that they can actually do something in our schools? Since our schools are, you know, part of our community, as much as they may not want to see that. I was just wondering how that, I mean, because I don't hear their name. So I'm assuming that they're not involved at this point, maybe because they don't want to be or whatever.
Well, the Blue Zones, so both Esmeralda and I are on the Blue Zones Steering Committee, and I've gone to all of the summits. You know, clearly they're working with the 59,000 residents of Petaluma, and that's, you know, they want everybody to lean towards that healthy lifestyle. But they are, they wanna work very closely with, with Brian Defore. He's on the Board of Healthy Petaluma as well, and we work with closely with Healthy Petaluma with Ramona. So they are very, very much interested in the schools. And, you know, right now they're kind of building their foundational plan. But they, they definitely, as far as, you know, they're, they're working off their own grant, you know, to, to get things going and to gather all the information they need. And, you know, they're working on built, you know, the built environment, they're working on the food systems. So, but the schools are definitely a huge part of it, and that's why they asked us to be on there as well as the superintendent.
I hear that, I hear that, and, and I know that they want to be. And I know that they see schools as being part of that. I just don't see any action on their part of really partnering to the degree that we need. It's not you.
Right.
You know, I don't, you guys are doing amazing work. And since we're in this beginning part of it, I'm just wondering if, if there's something that we can do to, you know, as I said before, leverage that influence that they have. All of the data that they're collecting, we're the biggest employer in the town. We serve 70, close to 7,500 students. I don't want to get on the bandwagon, even though I am. But I just really feel that they would be a fantastic resource for funding the Wellness Centers in particular.
And Maddie, I just, I just jump in. We have been in conversation with Healthy Petaluma, Blue Zones around Wellness Centers, and there's, there is some interest there. We actually, Molly, Esmeralda and I met today. We're gonna be meeting next week with Healthy Petaluma to talk about what this could look like and what some, some funding could, could look like. I'd love to have, love to have you there if you're available. But this is, this, yeah, I would love to have you there. And as well as looking at some outside foundations as well. Because when I, when you do the math, I mean, if, if you throw in the elementary sites as well, it's about 900,000, $900,000 to $1 million ongoing costs per year. That's if, if you wanna see, and when you, when you talk about the, the two large comprehensive high schools, you're really looking at that, those two positions. If you go back to that, can you go back to that first slide? Right there. A Wellness Coordinator, what that, what that means is it's either a licensed marriage family therapist or social worker, someone, right, who can see students in those tier two, tier three interventions. And then you've got the Wellness Outreach Specialist, that is typically a classified position, where your intake tier one, keeping that center open all day before school, after school, making sure that we're fully staffed. And so when you look at Casa Petaluma High, the cost, Kennelworth Petaluma Junior, the reason, right, you, you just have that tier one support as, as an open center. When you add in the seven elementary schools as well, including PAX and DL, the Dual Language Immersion, all of the, all of the schools that we have, we're looking at about 900,000 to a million, 900 to a thousand, $1 million ongoing cost every single year. And so it's reaching out to these foundations to say, this, I mean, when we talk about safety at schools, here's being proactive as, as opposed to let's be reactive. Here, here's a chance for us to be proactive with this. And I know there are, there are foundations out there that are looking to support wellness in our schools.
Any other questions, Philip or Jayden? Do you have any questions? No pressure. Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to our first interim report.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we present the first interim to our 2024 adopted budget. I'll just get it in slideshow presentation.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
The objective of the first interim is required by Education Code 42130, which requires districts to submit two financial interim reports to the County Office of Education each fiscal year. The first interim is from July 1 through October 31st, and our second interim is from July 1 to January 31st. Actual financial data through October 31st, this is actually 2023. I'm sorry about that. With revised projection for the remainder of the fiscal year, we are required to certify our budget either positive, negative, or qualified. I'm happy to report that I am bringing forward a positive interim tonight. Meaning that we will meet our financial obligations for the current year and two subsequent fiscal years. Considerations that are in tonight's report are, is that PCS is highly dependent on state and local funding. One-time pandemic funds are nearly spent. You'll see later in the report, our plan is to spend the remaining restricted funds through this fiscal year. Now that our books for 2223 are closed, the first interim includes our carryover balances for categorical programs, school sites, and departments, which really increases our expenditures, but it does not increase our revenue because that is the last year's part of the ending fund balance. So you will see a higher, an increase to our deficit spending, which is pretty typical with most first interims. I also want to point that there is substantial budget deficit in the upcoming fiscal year with the state of California. The LAO report came out yesterday. And there is a $68 billion budgetary shortfall that we will start addressing with the Governor's January 1 Budget. There'll be more information for that. The other thing that I wanted to point out, that we show a projective cost of living adjustment in fiscal year 2425 next year at 3.94%. That is part of that current LCFF calculator and the School Services of California DART Board. Part of the LAO report is, the COLA is trending at 1.27% for next fiscal year. This, we're not panicking yet. This often happens at this time of year, and then the governor will start doing his thing, though he does generally support the COLA of the LAO we have seen in previous years. If everybody remembers the negative 10% COLA, that turned out to be 15%. That was a lot of back and forth that year. We did not know our COLA till halfway through the year. Something like that could happen for next year. There's no reason to panic, but it is, we do want to keep that on the forefront. Here are our budget reset assumptions for revenue for current year and our multi-year projections. The highlighted yellow is current year. One thing I wanted to point out on our adopted budget, our estimated student enrollment for this year was 7,194. So we have increased 169 students. Thank you, Fadaji. Though later on, I'll show you, we don't actually see that much of a difference in our funding model, unfortunately. That's not millions of dollars, it's like 160,000, but, so, yeah. So we're trending, we're nearly flat funded, our, our enrollment is nearly flat, even with the increase of TK expanding over the next two years. So I know it's something that we often talk about in cabinet and board meetings on, and we're really focusing on student enrollment with all the news coming from the state and how we are funded. Increasing our enrollment is going to become more important, more important than ever. I wanted to also point out that our high school attendance rate is roughly 95%. Our elementary is quite a bit lower. They have been down in the 80s through the pandemic. Before the pandemic, they were closer to the high school. So you can see that we're showing trends back up to 95%. Our hope is we are constantly working on getting our students to school. Unfortunately, this is still below what the state would like to see and what most districts in California have. It's closer to 97%. So for every percentage we're down, these are funds that we lose. Another thing I'd like-
And I just want to add in here, and it's been very tricky to talk about attendance rates as we're coming out of a pandemic and thinking about sicknesses and illnesses and students. You know, we've gone from, oh, you have, you have a sniffle, stay home, to now, at what point do you draw the line in encouraging not spreading things? And so it's been a very tricky, tricky topic to navigate for everyone.
The CBO is like, put a mask on, come to school. No, just kidding. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Our unduplicated pupil percentage, this is a carryover from last year. This data was as of October 31st, and we have, we still have not certified our Fall 1 data. We will be doing that in the next week. We are seeing trends quite a bit higher that will update at second interim, closer to 47%. Yeah. The cost of living adjustment, we are 8.22 for this year. And like I said earlier, we used the information, we were given at the time of the LCFF calculator, which was at 3.94 and 3.29 for next year and the following year. Budget assumptions for our expenditures, we have not settled employing compensation for this year or two fiscal years out. Our step-in column is as budgeted, and we are anticipating in our multi-year projections, a 2% increase for certificated and just over 1% for classified. CalSTRS is remaining flat funded, funded as there is a buy-down from the state. Unfortunately, CalPERS will continue to climb up to 28.5% in fiscal year 26. State unemployment is back down to 0.05%. This is the first time since the pandemic, so this is a huge savings overall for districts. All right, here are the changes in our general fund revenue from our adopted July 1 budget to first interim with some variances. I changed it up. I didn't want to scare you guys too much this time. So the, the negatives are still there, but I'm highlighting the red on the changes that we don't love so much. So it's a little different than last time. So we have a little bit increase in our LCFF. As I said, those 169 students bought us $192,000. That is because we thought our enrollment was going to be lower than last year, and we would have been funded on a previous year. So we're trending in the right direction. Federal revenue is up just under $500,000. Our other state revenue has decreased by just over $1 million. This has to do with some of the one-time funding where our allocations are lower than anticipated. That is the Learning Recovery Block Grant and the Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant. Their local revenue is slightly changed, so we're seeing a variance of just under $500,000 from budget. We have a little bit of a bigger variance in our expenditures since the adopted budget. Our certificated and classified salaries, including benefits, are all down a little bit. Those are due to some vacant, unfilled positions. We take what wasn't filled as of, from July 1 through October 31st, and we remove them if they were vacant from the budget. So this, we could see more changes if we still have some unfilled positions at the end of the year. Our books and supplies have increased by $3.7 million. This is due to the carryover from last year, where I talked about a little bit where, so this was sitting in our ending fund balance. We have carryover for many programs and site allocations, and we have to give them back so, into the budget so the sites can use them. So it really inflates your budget at first interim. Our services and other operating expenditures, we are anticipating to go down a little bit. A little bit of an increase to capital outlay, that's due to the facility walks that we have been doing at our site. So overall, you can see that our expenditures have increased by just about $2.5 million. You took away the carry, if we didn't have carryover, our expenditures would actually be down a little bit in this year, so. All right, here are our multi-year projections. Current year is the yellow column, and fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26. I just wanted to note that we are deficits, we are projected to deficit spend $12 million in this fiscal year. Just under a million in next fiscal year, and looking at a balanced budget in 2526. Another thing to note is you can see that we had a restricted beginning balance, and that does not carry over. If we do not spend those funds at will, the intent of the state is that you spend your most restricted dollars first, and you historically only book the revenue in the year that you are spending it. So the Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant is a great example. We received a big chunk of it in last year, so it was booked in last year, even though we weren't spending it. So we'll see the expenditure here. This could happen again, but the intent of restricted funds is you spend them in the year, you receive them. So the system doesn't really allow for us to carry forward restricted funds. So that will also change each year's budget. Unless we spread, spend our restricted, and then we just have unrestricted, not a horrible problem to have. This is just a quick snapshot, that is super blurry, of the $9.2 million of restricted funds that we still have. That includes our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, our Educator Effectiveness. We have some lottery instructional materials that we're holding on to. The Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant. We have some food service funding in our general fund for the infrastructure grant in here. Other restricted and our routine restricted maintenance account. These are our beginning and our ending fund balances for our special reserves. We have adult education, our child nutrition. You can see that we are working on spending down some of the $2.1 million. We have just under six months of operating costs in our food service, and you cannot have any more than that. So we have a plan, I'm working with the Food Service Department on purchasing equipment as we move into our new food service program for next year. Our deferred maintenance, that just shows a teeny bit of interest in there. Our building fund, our capital facilities, our bond funds. This is what is already accrued for this year. As we bring more projects to the board, we could spend down more of the $19 million in this fiscal year. We are currently working on a capital facilities fund, that's our Fund 25, our developer fee, that we will bring back to the board next month. And then in second interim, what you'll see is we will- And then in second interim, what you'll see is we will earmark the spending for that. That along with our Fund 40, our reserve for capital outlay. Then we have our other special funds that have their purposes, and they don't change a whole lot. Okay, looking forward, the governor's proposed budget is in January of 2024. The other thing that I really think the next focus of the business department is really looking into our enrollment and ADA projections, so much centers around what we have. So that is important. We are starting a budget advisory committee that will meet for the first time in January. The Legislative Analyst Office Fiscal Outlook, I touched on. There's a $68 billion deficit for next year. This is due to the revenue shortfalls created from the deferred taxes. So we just, the state is having a hard time catching up. There are Prop 98 funds, they can spend down next year 26, roughly $26 billion. That still leaves this really big deficit, and more to come in January and then the May revise. I would like to point out that came out today is that inflation is down, which is the first time since before the pandemic, which is really going to help us with our spending for supplies and our operating services, that it's about in half of what it was for last year. So that's super exciting. Who knew that I'd call inflation being down super exciting? Man, all right, that was a lot. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Any, no, I think, I think we're all good. I think we all weren't just nodding along. I think I understand what's going on. Yeah, try. Thank you. Moving on, we'll hear about Arts and Music Committee presentation.
On where we are and have been with the Arts and Visual Performing Arts Committee. Like the previous years, you know, it's comprised of teachers, site administrators, parents, community partners, district administrators, board representatives, and all dedicated to the arts. This is some of the dates that we've had our meetings, and we're going to go over some of the, some of the things that we've been able to kind of accomplish throughout last year and this year. So we, last year we had a board-approved Arts Movementation Plan. You may recall the presentation we had on that. We had a board-approved Arts and Music Block Grant Spending Plan for the Instruction Materials Discretionary Block Grant. We put in place a PCS VAPA Chair, which we have here. She's our Punkt Fort, I believe, VAPA Chair.
I'm doing Point Two.
Point Two. We were able to also onboard two elementary VAPA specialists from our plan.
Let me go back on that.
Sure.
So we were able this year to get elementary specialists in. They are currently providing 12 weeks, one hour a week of instruction. And they've gone through five different schools already, and then they do, they'll start their last 12 weeks going into, I think it's finally McNear and Grant. Everybody else will have that, so it's great. We have, they're doing wonderful work. We've got the TKers, the sixth graders, they're getting all this information. And they're also providing an hour prep extra for elementary teachers, just been great.
One hour per week of instruction per class.
Yeah. I've also spent a lot of time putting together a sort of supply system. So the supplies we need, they come through me, we make a big order, I check them in and make sure they get to the sites. And we've created sort of a depot at each location with the lockables for a supply station. And then those materials are things they can use in the classrooms that are reusable. And then they have a lot of things that they're consuming, of course, that we're continuing to reorder as we figure out really how much we need at each site. That comes up later. Go ahead.
Other outcomes is, you know, doing professional development around UDL and arts integration. I know Aaron's has done a lot of outreach with AEA and PAC and Lumicon. I don't know if you want to say this year anything about that.
So, yeah, I've been working with a lot of different groups, trying to reach out and do some overlap and maybe get things started so that they understand kind of what our programs are and make sure that we're making connections and not, you know, recreating the wheel. The professional development piece, we did two different presentations for arts integration, and it went really well. There were a lot of elementary and high school educators there. We talked a lot about the fine arts and trying to do a lot of overlap with what everybody else was doing and gave them a lot of tools so that they can find other ways to demonstrate mastery using the arts. And that went over really well, so we just have to do some follow-up.
Moving on, focusing on this year is really the implementation of our plan, really putting in place priorities within the plan, creating a roadmap for that. Expanding the elementary arts, hiring a full-time district VAPA coordinator, because it is a lot of work and as Eric can attest to. We have dedicated arts teaching storage spaces, but I think that's something that-
Yeah, yeah, I would say that one of the major concerns in attracting and retaining our arts educators is actually having dedicated spaces that are appropriate for what they need to do. We already have elementary music folks who are struggling to stay in one location. You know, secondary has the basics. We all know we don't have a visual performing arts center, which we should have and should work toward, which I am dedicated to doing. But that we were talking about sort of temporary things like portables and storage solutions, so that each location acts as a place to put these people and actually make them want to stay. Because we're in competition around the county with folks who have these facilities, and it's hard to get a performing arts person to come without having a real theater. It's hard to get musicians to stay if they don't actually have a room, if they're being, having to push in. Elementary art specialists, we were very lucky to get the two that we have, and it's, we're trying to hang on to them, but they're moving around with carts, right? So, I mean, we really need to think about how we're going to go forward and create spaces that allow our students to have the arts in a way that's going to be important and respected, and that's how we get our teachers to stay.
So this is kind of the various disciplines within VAPA. We have dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts.
Right, so media arts is the newest one to the group there and the disciplines. And kind of we have listed on there some of the higher level thinking ideas that go along with each of the different disciplines, right? And how we can, we were using this for the integration presentation with all of our other instructors to kind of explain, like, these are some of the things that we really want for our students, especially with things like AI coming along and trying to really compete with understanding, you know, competence and whether or not our students have learned what we're teaching, right? The arts are a great way to do that. You heard all about how they're wonderful for people and their, and their mental health, right? And SEL work and connection and community and just learning how to be a human, right? I mean, the arts are truly how we demonstrate our mastery of many, all of our subject matters, right? And they are an expected reality. I always say, we're not an extra, right? We don't tell students who aren't very physically, you know, interested, don't worry about it, you don't have to take PE. We don't, we don't want to tell students, I'm not artistically talented, therefore I don't have to take an art class. The arts are all around us, they're a part of our world, and we're trying to bring it into our lessons now, TK through 12.
So really just want to spend a little bit of moment just thanking the board and the superintendent and everyone in the community to really supporting the arts here at Petaluma City Schools. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think we have the right support, and I think we can really accelerate providing VAPA for as many of our students as possible, if not all of them, because we know the benefits of them. They boost school attendance, they boost academic achievement, they improve school climate, they improve self-esteem and social emotional development, and so on and so forth. And to end quickly with this video that kind of sums up what we hope to have with here.
Right now, students face havoc because of the COVID-19 pandemic. As they transition to distance learning, lose social contact, their well-being is in peril. But the arts offer a solution. Reports show that students suffer more from mental health issues since the pandemic started. This is a crisis. Over 50% of students say they're in need of mental health support right now. That's an increase of 30% since the pandemic began. And arts education is critical to supporting students' social emotional health as we're all navigating uncertainties about the future, grief, losses of freedom and expression. The arts are unique in their capacity to encourage self-awareness, self-reflection, lower anxiety, increase relationship skills, teach empathy, ignite creativity, and actively engage students in the courses they're already taking. Right now, the importance of arts education is non-negotiable. Researchers tell us that students who participate in the arts not only show more sophisticated social skills from sharing to cooperation, but also a reduction in shyness and anxiety. Children who participate regularly in art are better able to manage their emotions and express themselves in productive ways. In this time of crisis, students need those ways of expression more than ever. As we challenge this moment, we have the opportunity to reimagine our entire school system, centering our students' social emotional needs and making sure that arts education is a part of every student's life, even while learning from far. The arts are a critical and core curriculum. It's past time our schools actively recognize that. Arts education is not just nice to have, it's not optional, it's essential. So let's make an arts education a reality for every kid. Join the movement at createca.org and share this video.
So with that, thank you again. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. The, it made me think about Amanda was saying, you know, she's doing the facilities walks, you know, to identify needs of our current facilities, but what about facilities we don't have yet? Like a forwarding arts center, storage space, all these kinds of stuff. Are we, are we communicating with the Arts Committee? Is part of that list that we want to build for potential funding through bond measures and other things?
Yeah, we haven't had, I mean, you know, the two of here, I haven't had specific conversations, but I would just wrote that down as well, Charlotte, on my list of things to do. We have had some conversations, some recent conversations with our music teachers. I know arts, it's this debt, finding this dedicated space. I know some of our school sites have more space than others. Many of our school sites are bursting at the seams, trying to locate, I mean, closets for offices. And so I like, I mean, the idea of having a dedicated portable space for music teachers and arts. I mean, as, as Aaron shared, there's this, this, this respect that goes into it and our ability to attract and retain teachers. So now we need to find the space, and we need to figure out how to, how to get them.
And same, by the way, with the wellness centers.
Yes, exactly.
All fundable.
Right, and we are, right, it's, there are only so many of those educators out there. We can go, I mean, I have started going to the university and starting to talk to folks there and say, you know, are you interested? And I've talked to some students who have graduated and have masters in the arts, and they know where the facilities are and where they want to be, right? We're not the top on the list at the moment. I'm thinking portables, I'm thinking converting a room with a real dance floor somewhere, right? I'm thinking pods, storage pods, or like the facilities we have for the storage for sports equipment, right? Those are all things that we can do just easily. I mean, even at Kennelworth, there's, I have display boards that are just plywood, but I put it for open house every year. They sit outside in the rain all year long. There's nowhere for them to go, right? I mean, I'm a very basic, you know, facility arts-wise. So there's a lot we could be doing, we just have to, and then I will work on it as well. We're going to talk about in committee, like, where can we use any of our arts funding as well to make sure that we, we help make this a more attractive situation.
Yeah, no, I can't help but picture people dragging the giant marimbas around, like, Jesus. Yeah.
Yeah, it becomes quite a, yeah, we are in competition, it's a deterrent at this point.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments about VAPA? Thank you. All right, our last presentation is the LCAP data. And then we'll take a break, I promise. I'm not going to do that to Lindsay.
And Tonya, I know you're, you're part of this as well. I just, I just want to frame, frame this conversation a little bit. And there's a lot of data that you're going to see from the LCAP presentation. But I think it's important to just to be keeping this in the back of all of our minds around our district goals and objectives. And there's been lots and lots of work that's, you know, that's gone into them and is a natural progression, right? We have, we're about to, we're about to embark on a three-year, a brand-new three-year LCAP cycle. And so naturally, we have our LCAP Committee, our Continuous Improvement Committee, looking at our professional development for our district, our administrative team, school board, everyone looking at these goals and objectives through the lens of our data and trying to figure out what goals and objectives do we keep? Which ones do we tweak? Which ones do we take out? Based on what the data is telling us and based on what our, our community and our staff and students are telling us that we need to, we need to, where we need to, where we need to focus, so.
Great, yep. So, yeah, we just wanted to make sure that you all were coming alongside those other groups and committees that are looking at these data, so that you're, you're coming from the same perspective of them. So really, just very first starting out, you know, basic, the LCAP Committee really wanted to know, what are the demographics of our school? So here on this first slide, we have our English learners, our low-income students. And then also, even though our students with disabilities aren't specifically called out in, in the LCAP as a group that we need to attend to, we all know we added a goal for our students with disabilities last year just based on their, their outcomes and our identification for differentiated assistance. So one of the questions the LCAP Committee had as well was looking at the intersectionality between, say, our students with disabilities and our low-income students. So on this slide, we have looking at some disproportionality in our low-income students who are identified with a disability. So on the left-hand side, you can see low-income students make up 43% of our overall enrollment. On the right-hand side, you can see they make up 57% of our students with disabilities. So ideally, that line should be flat. It should be 43% on both sides. So we have a little bit of a disproportionality happening with our, our low-income students who are identified with a disability. We're seeing this similar thing to, with our English learners. So they're 10% of our overall enrollment and 17% of our students with disabilities. That, that should be 10% on both sides, and it's almost double when we're looking at English learners who are identified with a disability. You know, I think we're going to be spending sometime, we're embarking on the special education study, and I think I'm looking to that to help explain a little bit of that why. They'll be looking at our identification processes, and, and I think we can really interrogate that when we get the results of the study.
Is any part of it out of our universe? Like, are parents of special education students possibly picking private schools from the get-go? Like, is there some stuff that we're not going to be able to capture, I guess?
I don't know. That's, that's a good thought, but I'm, I'm not sure about that, yeah. So the next set of data is for our CASP data. So this is looking at, you know, post-pandemic, the year from 2022 to 2023, and looking at the percent of students who are meeting or exceeding standards. You'll see for English Language Arts, Math, and Science, Petaluma City Schools is exceeding both the state and the county outcomes. And I think you'll also see that, you know, there's not a ton of movement in Petaluma City Schools, nor the state, nor the county. You know, maybe a 1% up or down. With the exception of mathematics in the state, they had a 2% gain. So I think we're just really seeing what we all know, recovering from this distance learning and the unfinished learning that our students may have is going to take a while. And we're, we're seeing that throughout the state of California. So while, you know, we are exceeding the state and the county, I'm going to bring us back to a visualization we looked at last year, where we're looking at the gap between our student groups and our all, all students. So this is just zeroing in, so we can talk about how to look at this graph. The all students, you know, we're looking from twenty-fifteen all the way at the left, the very first year we administered Smarter Balance, to twenty-twenty-three, last year, all the way at the right. So all students is represented by the gray dot, and that's the percent of students meeting or exceeding standard. And you, there has been a little bit of slide post-COVID, I think you'll notice. But again, not a ton of variability in the data. We've been pretty much plateauing since the first year the assessment was administered. And what this is showing is the gap between all students, and this is our black or African-American students. So there, there's a gap where forty-three percent of those students met or exceeded standards last year. And so on the next slide, we'll zoom out, and these are all of the student groups that we have represented. And not every point on this, on this chart, you have to look at. What's really important is to look at the overall shape of the data. And I think what you'll see is, you know, similar to, to last year, where certain student groups are performing above all students, and then certain student groups are performing below all students. The gray is all students. So the gray is the same on, you know, the English learner data, and it's the same on the, you know, multiple race data. That gray dot is stagnant on all of the data. So I think looking at these, these gaps in the data, one thing that our administrators have noticed, our continuous improvement committee have noticed, and our LCAP committee have noticed, is that English learners and students with disabilities are the two groups that are really bubbling up to the top of needing some additional support and attention from us. It is important to realize with the English learner student group, by definition, they are not proficient in English. So as soon as they are proficient in English, then they're no longer in that group anymore, they're in the reclassified group. So just keep that in mind when we're, when we're looking at these data, because this group continually has its high performers leaving. I do think it's important to look at our reclassified data, though, because as, as soon as students are able to meet those reclassification criteria, they perform on par with all students. So I think that really needs to, it, it, it's great news, right? And I think it just needs to continue to be a focus of getting those students reclassified, focusing on designated ELD, focusing on integrated ELD in the early grades, so that, you know, they're hitting that important reclassification by the time they get to the junior highs and high schools. So similarly in math, you know, the, the trends are there, the trends are continuing, that there are, are gaps between all students and, and the student groups. And again, you'll notice that English learners, students with disabilities for math as well, are, those are the, the gaps that really jumped out to all of the groups that had been looking at these. All right, so we've talked a little bit today about our next two items already, chronic absenteeism and suspension. So chronic absenteeism, let me talk to you about what it is we're looking at here. So let's look at the, the homeless youth, that's that kind of, it looks like a comet, right? That red comet all the way to the right. The, the comet is showing the direction of the data. So there's the tail on the left and the head on the right. So they went from, you know, about fifty percent of our unhoused youth were chronically absent in twenty-twenty-two, and that, you know, went over to about fifty-seven percent. So if you jump back up to the top, overall, chronic absenteeism is down a little. Not, you know, we, we haven't seen great strides in that. And for most of our student groups, chronic absenteeism has decreased a little. Just to provide a little bit of context for the, the homeless student group, that's a really small student group. It's, you know, fewer than thirty kids. So a change in, you know, having one or two more students could account for, for that big, you know, change in that. So we don't want one or two more students to be chronically absent, but just to kind of have a little bit of context of, of the numbers of kids we're talking about. And while you notice that, you know, the, there wasn't a big increase for the two groups we've been talking about, students with disabilities and English learners, there wasn't a huge increase. But if you look, they are two of our highest groups when we're looking at chronic absenteeism. So again, just that theme is coming through, there is a great need to be supporting those students. And then also on suspension, this is organized in the same way, where it's the, it's looking at the change. So from last year to this year, we're looking from the tail to the head, where, where the movement has happened. Overall, suspension rates increased a little bit. And I, I, I need to point out too, that CDE calculates their suspension rates a little differently than the data you saw earlier. The data you saw earlier is each incident counts, and, and we compare that to the overall enrollment. How CDE looks at it is they look at each student. So if a student was suspended four times, they count once still. So this is how it'll be shown on the dashboard, when we look at the dashboard in January. This is how our accountability system works at the state level. So it's just, they're both really valid ways to look at it, but it's just a little bit different what we're looking at here. So again, you know, a little bit of an increase overall, and then some student groups having bigger increases or decreases. And, and where we're seeing the most movement is when it's a smaller student group, where, you know, a couple of students can change that percentage a little bit. As, as Merelda mentioned, you know, we, we knew a question was going to come up about like, what, what are students getting suspended for? So I took a look at last year's suspension reasons, and really, there were three that really rose to the top. Fighting or violence, you know, anything that kind of fell into that realm. We're looking at about a third of our suspensions are for that. And then the other third is being, is made up of substances. So having alcohol, excuse me, or tobacco, or, you know, drugs on campus, that, that would account for twenty-two percent. And then bullying and harassment is another nine percent. The, all of the other categories, it was like point-five percent gang-related. It was, you know, maybe one percent vandalism. So there, there wasn't really any other things that stood out, it was just kind of one-offs in, in all of the other organizations. So if we're going to be looking at something to take action on, I feel like these three categories are the ones that we should be looking at to, to try to have an impact. And expulsions, so expulsions, you know, we'll report it out in the LCAP as, as a expulsion rate, that's how we're required to do that. But, you know, moving from like point-four percent expulsions to point-seven percent expulsions, what does that mean? And so I, I wanted to look at the number of students, just to give, again, some of that context. So between the twenty-two school year and the twenty-three school year, our expulsions increased from four students who were expelled to nine, so more than doubling in that last year. I think it's important too, to, to just remember what these years were like that we're looking at, right? Like twenty-one, twenty-two, that was welcome back from distance learning, we haven't seen you in over a year. Everybody was happy, everybody was just like, we were all masked up, right? Everybody's still like, trying to figure out school a little bit. And then twenty-two, twenty-three was different. So, so just, I, I think it's just important to remember where, where we all were during those years. And then, huh, that's weird. Oh, there, oh. Thank you. I didn't know that was on there like that. So we are administering, we, some chosen questions from the Youth Truth Survey, frequently to our, our staff, our families and our students. So just highlighting some of those, those questions. Both of these are from the staff, and it's about professional learning. So the first one, my professional development has given me strategies to better meet my students' needs. That's just continuing to increase. I have access to meaningful professional development, continuing to increase. So our theory and our thinking is the more we are giving teachers tools to improve their instruction, to improve their support for students, eventually, that's going to have an impact on the other outcomes that we looked earlier. And that's going to take time to transfer from the teacher's learning and experience to the outcomes for students. So that's our working theory of action right now. And then with students, the two that we're highlighting here are when I'm feeling stressed or having problems, there's an adult from school who I can talk to about it. Matthew, I think, has done a really good job of making it clear to our educators, this is important, this is our focus. And I, it was interesting to hear from our continuous improvement committee, just like knowing that this is an important issue and knowing that it's something we have identified to improve on was really important for them. You know, last year, we were asking this question, and I don't know if that message had really gotten to our educators yet. So I think we're, we're continuing to move all arrows pointing in the same direction with this one, just getting that feedback from our teachers. So, you know, here's, here's our data, you know, since January twenty-twenty-two. The black dots on there are the Comprehensive Youth Truth Survey that happens in January, and it's given across Sonoma County. So just for a little context, I included Sonoma County's overall Youth Truth responses to this question. And as you can see, we're not really, really too far off from Sonoma County. And when we look nationwide on this particular question, depending if it's, we're looking at elementary, middle, and high school, our percentile rank, so comparing us to other schools, we're in the twenties and the thirties. So, you know, our Sonoma County context gives a little bit of information, but also looking at nationwide, that gives us a little bit more information that this should be still an area of focus for us, because other schools are much higher than we're at. And then, so the trends that came up in the data, I don't think you'll be surprised, because I've been hitting it a little hard. But the, what the committees are noticing is our students with disabilities really need to have access to grade-level curriculum so that they can be successful. Same thing with our multilingual learners. And then everybody really resonated with, okay, over half of our students don't have a trusted adult on campus, that there was some sense of urgency around that. So, yep.
Is it the same K-12, less than half, or are the elementary schools doing better than the secondary schools, or?
Yeah, so on the trusted adult question, elementary's at fifty-four percent, middle's at forty-four, and high school's at forty-six. Yeah. So as Matthew started this all out, we're taking all of these data, we're taking all of our required metrics that we have in the LCAP. We are taking our partner engagement that, you know, not only is it required to do as part of the LCAP process, but it's just good practice. And I, I have to say, you know, our LCAP committee has been really, I mean, we've had a lot of parents show up. We've had, what, twenty, twenty-five parents showing up, and they're really engaged, they're really bringing up some thoughtful questions and, and, you know, wrestling with all of these data. So, so I think we're going to get some great feedback from them. And then, you know, we're going to feed all of that into our LCAP actions and goals, and really base our actions on what we find in, in good research out there. And on part of now what, you know, so part of the actions that are coming forward, we, we already have some actions that are intended to move the needle on some of these. And one of those actions is our Common Math assessments. So Josh is going to talk a little bit about where that's at this year and give you some data on, on that.
Thanks, before I go any further, I have to say, it's been a blast watching Lindsay take this set of data from Continuous Improvement Committee to the, to the administrators, to you, and so it's great to have this common conversation across. And so this is the second time I've got to share this data this week, and it's kind of fun. So let me quickly just remind you where we're at with Common Math assessments and kind of a story that happened this fall. So back in September, all kids third through sixth grade took what we call the DEMI, District Essential Math Assessment indicators. So twelve items, just like what's really important at each grade level. Then myself and some others looked with MathAnx and like chose two focus areas, two tasks that we thought, okay, this is, this is where each grade level needs to dig in. We delivered professional development at the grade-level meetings, which included looking at the data. And here is two lessons to address that, these re-engagement lessons. They went out and taught those two lessons and then gave a post-assessment. And then we just got the data back on that post-assessment. So. Yeah, so that's a little, and then we're going to do that whole cycle again in the fall, I mean, sorry, in the spring. So first off, we had one task that we gave every kid. It's this task around understanding the equal sign. And it's such a, a key part of understanding basically algebra. So it, it is, when we talk about essential mathematics, that this is a huge piece. And then, so we focused on it, and you'll see some pre and post-data. And what we're, we also focus, as Lindsay pointed out, we're looking at our English learners and our students with disabilities. And you'll notice that in this particular case, our students with disabilities were out, outgrowing, you know, growing at a faster rate than all students. Go ahead, you go to the next one. The next one I find really fascinating is that one of the great things about the assessment system we're using, we're not just looking at percent correct. Because of the way it's built, and it's not just multiple choice, kids are putting in answers, and that they, that MathAnx really takes an asset-based lens to the approach. They looked at kids who answered, maybe not correctly, but were looking at, but had a correct understanding of the equal sign, which was more important than actually the correct answer, because that's the big idea here. And if you'll notice that our English learners grew a lot. So you may not have seen the correct answers grow at quite a rate, but they took a bigger step towards understanding the big thing. So we're seeing a highlight there. So that was, that's across all third through, actually, seventh grade, at Cherry Valley also did this. So if you go on to the next one, so looking at one other task, so there was another task that we gave to three different grade levels, which is fractions on a number line. And once again, a very important piece, go ahead, go to the next one. You'll notice, I mean, look at, we've got five times as many kids getting that question right with students with disabilities, and three times as many kids with English learners. So we're seeing great growth there. And if you go one more slide, once again, just the number, the, the answer is a fraction, by the way. Just the number of kids who put a fraction as an answer increased even more so. So, so even those kids who may or not got it right, they took a step forward. And so once again, our, the student populations, one of my questions I had going into this is, these re-engagement lessons that we're doing with these students, who are they working for? And so I, I think we have some, some answers to that. And so once again, we'll repeat this process again in the spring. My question is, that's a total of four lessons, that's not a ton of lessons. So is this learning sustainable? Is it, you know, going to last? And what else can we do to have more impactful lessons every day? So that's, that's a little bit of an update there, yeah.
I just have a, a quick question. Were the, were the students informed about this increase in their?
No.
Or is this just to the teachers?
It's just the teachers. And actually, they, the teachers just got this data last Friday. And I'm meeting with the third through sixth grade math committee on Monday, and we're going to look at this data and talk about that. So the students haven't seen this data yet.
I was just wondering, because it would really make them feel incredibly successful.
Right.
And as a troubled math student.
Yes.
It would have been helpful.
And, and quite often, kids don't get a chance to do a second draft in math. And so this is an opportunity that they've had an opportunity to go back and revise their thinking, and so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was just about to ask is, how do you?
Yeah, that's what I was just about to ask is how do you account for the, the repeat, the history bias? You know, in the, in the sense that they're taking a post-test of the same measurements, probably, I don't know what, what time that span is between start and finish, but.
Yeah, so one thing to know is that the second, the post, the post-assessment is a cloned item, so it's not the same i- item exactly. Um, and will we look, and some of those items, other clones will be showing up on the uh, DEMI that they take in February. So that's what I'm really interested in, sure, that happened, you know, some people gave those lessons and then a day or two later gave the post-assessment. Well, what happens two months out? And so that's what we're going to be able to see in the spring.
Anybody else have any questions, student board members? Cool. Thank you both. Thank you. Um, with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I am gaveling us back in in five minutes, whether you're here or not.
It was all you, I had no. I was saying, when you were trying to do it, then I just did it.
Oh, and then I was like, oh, I guess it's happening, somebody's doing it for me, thank you, that's for.
You got your man.
Well, because it happened like after, so I thought it was a delay.
Nice work.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that exciting?
Yeah.
Thanks for, for knowing that data.
Oh. I catch it every time, right, yeah.
These data.
Yes. You know, it was Nakar Redsaw, one of, one of my former colleagues, she always did it and I was like, oh, gosh, I'm doing it wrong. It takes a while to change it.
It always catches my ear when I hear it too. Well, that's right.
All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna take it off. Good to see you. I, I took a hand, that was my private place. I was just, I have so many. January. That's what I want to talk about, so we'll do that. I mean, you can't, but here's what I think, because you and Ivy and Jacob are all doing some things, whatever, and they're really, I just want to make sure, not too much open. Yeah, you know, so I think having that conversation. And Sarah, and Sarah's kind of a professor of the academy for elementary. Yeah. They went, I think, went to the sub-lab training. Yeah. Um, and then, so she'll have some of those strategies and then Sarah will just help her translate that to elementary. So, but I think I need some of that to the person. So I'm trying to think, well, the elementary in January, but in church. I said, yeah, that's what I did. So I put some. Today, I started this conversation with somebody that was already in my head. So, I mean, I should have said, when we're at, oh, yeah. No, I know. I said, I had a question. I was kind of bottom of the ground here. I did. I just wanted to do a separate. I was using sort of kind of like this next. I love the present. There, there was a leak in half the bullfish that's like. But there's also an extra cheddar that you have. I want the standard. I'm a cheese and a chicken. Old fish is like. Classic chicken, like, I don't like. If I'm in a book, it'd be like. Too many things.
I'm just saying that.
Yeah. Remember, I just want the process. Like, that's all I want.
All right, Ryan, are you ready? Cool. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order at eight fifty-four as promised. Now we will talk about report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Thank you, President Emerita Pahn for collecting these. So we all attended the California School Boards Association Annual Conference, as did Jaden, I believe, Superintendent Harris and Executive Assistant Bree Weaver. Um, we, many of us attended the Parcel Tax Committee Meeting, a Fun Run, Environmental Literacy and Climate Action Committee Meeting. The Professional Development Subcommittee, um, Continuous Improvement Committee, Safe Routes to Schools Task Force Blueprint for Carbon Neutrality, Cool Petaluma Meeting. As well as Office Hours at Valley Vista, Pen Grove, Adult Ed, Sonoma Mountains, Petaluma High and San Antonio High. And then some of our student activities, our student board members' activities were the Bi-Poc Club, the Environmental Club and the Art of Noise Club. Does anyone have anything they want to say about any of the?
I just want to thank Becky and Amy for all the work that they did for the Fun Run. It was great. There were lots of people there and it takes a lot of work to put that on and you, I just want to thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else? If not, we're going to move on to comments from the public on consent items. Hello, members of the public. No, you don't want to, I don't, I'm not going to read the thing because you can't comment publicly via Zoom, sorry, we already talked about it. Um, I don't have to read it if, no, I'll read it when there's public comment, yeah. Okay, um, we're moving on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions about the consent agenda or any items on it, rather? Really? Okay, all, um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, hearing none? We'll move on to, I don't know whether to look at it in person or online, I don't know. Um, comments from the public on action items. Hey, public, what, no, okay, cool. Um, I can move on to fifteen point two point one. Approval of Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School District First Interim Report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the in, first interim.
I second.
Have any questions arisen since we caught the presentation from our CBO? Hearing none? Yeah, thank you. Okay, all in favor of approving the first interim report? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, moving on to Ed Services, we'll have the first reading of the Equity Resolution, which is Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash fifteen. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the. It's just the first reading, why is it under action?
It is under action. Yeah, so we don't need to vote on it?
No.
Okay.
It's under discussion.
Yeah.
You can raise it for discussion.
All right, can someone move to, can someone move to move it to discussion and information only, please?
I move that we move uh, three point one to discussion information.
I second.
All right, um, all in favor of moving it to discussion and information only? Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, now comments from the public on discussion and information items, which now includes, what, oh? If I. Right, yeah, I was gonna do it under student service or under Ed Services on education, educational services, is that?
We're not a discussion.
Yeah, we're about to be in discussion, so I'll include it. But, yeah. No, it's okay. Um, comments from the public on discussion or information items? Nope, okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to item seventeen, discussion and information only, admin and human resources. Um, employee selection procedure handbook. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Sutter, would you like to tell us anything about this?
Sure, um, so I, I, the file that I loaded up was showing the tracking changes, so you could see the changes that, that we made. Um, we work with um, with our, our union partners as well on this, really to try and document what we do in our hiring processes. Now we saw that some of the stuff that was in the handbook wasn't matching how we hire and how we work um, together to have a transparent hiring process. So we just tried to capture that in that handbook.
Any questions or comments? My only question was going to be if we worked with our partners on this and they're nodding, so. Yeah, I know, exactly, yeah. Well, they're verifying, he's not just, you know.
Yep.
So unless our concerns are counted, this will come back in the next board meeting.
Great. Um, moving on to seventeen point one point two, first reading of a new board policy regarding vacations and holidays. Jason, can you talk to us about this one?
Uh, yeah, so uh, this one, uh, as I mentioned in the situation, um. The, we had changed the practice around vacations and holidays on the salary schedule last year and that was approved last year. When we were looking at the board policy, it reflected an old practice. So this was really an attempt to bring our policy in line with how we were paying our um, our classified management with, with vacation and how that was reflected already on the salary schedule, just trying to line things up.
Any comments or questions? All right.
I, I would add that, that one, one, um. Let me see if this is the one, the um. Oops. No, that's, we're good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see nothing under business services, so moving on to Ed Services. Can we talk about the first reading of the new course proposal, Broadcast Journalism Three?
So the broadcast journalism three is a capstone of the broadcast journalism one and two, so this is something that um. Um, that's offered at Petaluma High School and, um, and be a great opportunity to complete the pathway for, for those students who will, will really be able to dive into the business aspects of it, um, for what they've been learned from broadcast one and two.
Great, any questions?
As well as the, um, the intro class now that's happening.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah. So it's almost, it can be a four-course sequence if you're. Very, that's great. Um, our next new course proposal is Advanced Child Development and Careers in Education.
So this one is also a capstone from our child development um, pathway. And really, it's um, providing our, our students opportunities to have work-based learning around education, really um, developing the educational pathway that I think we need in our community, um, and encouraging our, our students to really pursue a career in education. And so this uh, child development and career education will be a continuation of what we currently offered last year and be at the capstone for, for this year.
I love that it has concurrent enrollment at the SSU, that's great for us and for them and for everybody.
This is incredibly exciting to me, so we've been talking over and over about, in a school district. We, in CT, one of the state identified CT pathways is education and this is, this is now just sort of showing that we're moving forward with a CT pathway around education and it's exciting, very exciting.
I just saw a next student of mine is on the sub-list. Oh. I know, it was very exciting, just wonderful.
All right, no other questions or comments? Uh, moving on to our last first reading of new course proposal, Accelerated Math One, Two, Three.
So um, currently Petaluma High School does not have an, a acceleration, a second acceleration point for students who, who may want to pursue higher level math. Uh, if they've missed the acceleration point in seventh grade, then there's really not an option for them to really have an opportunity to, to get into calculus, for example. And so this proposal is um, offering an accelerated math one, two and three combined in ninth grade to, to have that second acceleration point for students who might have missed it in, in seventh grade at Petaluma Junior. An opportunity for them to have an opportunity to accelerate in math um, at another point in high school.
Similar to what, is similar to what CASA has, so it essentially aligns the two comprehensive high schools. So there isn't, there is an additional acceleration point in high school.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, just real quickly, um, so it is primarily for ninth graders?
It's um, correct, because it's, it's going to combine math one, two and three together.
Okay.
If they're sophomores, most likely it would be in math two already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, hmm, okay, and then, um, are there any prerequisites?
There's no prerequisites, um, currently that I see on the, on the proposal.
So how will students be identified for this class?
I think um, um, there may be some recommendations. And I think that's something that the, the site may have to determine, uh, I think what we would, what we would want to do is look at multiple data points. Um, you know, it isn't just one thing that we would want, it can just be grades, for example, it would have to be multiple uh, things that could help determine whether or not students would benefit from this class, but irregardless, if they wanted to take this class in that grade, they would have that option to take it. It's just more information, the data would just be more information for, for the students and for the teachers.
I guess I just want to make sure that the information goes out to parents, so they know that their students even have this uh, option of opting in. I know a lot of times when the counselors come to talk to the eighth graders, like they're just talking to the students themselves. And I don't know how readily available that type of information and the why of it is made available to the parents. It'd be great if we could get that to them through ELAC meetings and through other means as well.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on to our fourth Ed Services item, the resolution um, twenty-three, twenty-four dash fifteen. Um, yeah, Tony, can you talk a little bit about this?
Sure, and um, just sharing a little bit, just to kind of recap, as you might recall, we had a, a board study session um, where we talked about really how the college and career readiness, readiness anchor standards, um, which are, is the backbone of the Common Core standards, which aligned with the A through G requirements, as the colleges recognized that the Common Core was rigorous and met the demands of, of college work. And so the colleges aligned it with A through G and A through G is a sequence of courses that as students meet, um, are, would be eligible for, um. You see in USC schools, CSU, CSU, CSU and UC schools in California. And um. Um, our district, we had, we talked about how forty-eight percent of our students were A through G. Um, and however, that ninety-one percent of them wanted to attend or may wanted to attend college. Uh, so um, we also looked at data around the disparities between various groups of who was A through G. And um, just to go back real quick. Um, this is just the, the, we looked at the sequence of what our graduation requirements were and what A through G was, and it's not much difference. Uh, we had changed a few things, we would, our graduate requirements would meet the A through G. But students who um, despite our graduation requirements exceeded the requirements to meet A through G was forty-eight percent. And, but we know that more students, um, based on youth through data, really wanted to pursue college or are planning to attend college, uh, which was ninety-one percent. Um, so really it comes down to um, access and making sure that our systems. access and making sure that our systems provide access for students. Because we know that what we do in life in the future as we're adults is influenced by the experiences that we have in K through twelve, you know, to be dramatic. Yes. So and there's, there's, you know, and when we think about what it is that, that will influence what impacts their adult life, it's the experiences that they have with us, K twelve, and whether or not they have access to a premium education or a well-defined option of an education for them. And for us, for us, A through G is not a sequence to go to college, but is an indicator of that premium education. It's the standard to which we say all students should have access to. As we talked about how it was rooted in the civil rights, access to CTE pathways and access to early college credit, having all those combined becomes a well-defined option for our students. And we, we talk about how that could be the floor as opposed to what kids are trying to achieve to, but what all kids have access to. And there's, and the reason behind it isn't, you know, it's really about choice and opportunity, giving students a choice and a sense of possibility for their futures and knowing that they will have options when they finish with our institution or organization. Because in life, they will be facing a job market that becomes much more increasingly competitive. And there's a lot of research that's come out from Georgetown University, from the National College Attainment Network, from Public Policies, and from the Brookings Institute that really lays out what jobs will be available. For example, in, in twenty thirty-one, forty-two percent of, of jobs will be required to have at least a bachelor's degree. And, you know, in the past thirty, forty years, that, that's having a higher educational advanced education really provides them more opportunities. And they take a risk if they don't pursue higher levels of education, especially when they face the job market in the next decade or so. And also, we know that, you know, a, a strong academic preparation is a great equalizer for a lot of our students. In colleges, in students who attend college graduate, they earn more, they have, they're healthier, have more stable employment. And there's a sizable difference with enrollments by gender and race and socioeconomic status when they have a academic preparation that's equitable across, for our subgroups. So for example, Black Hispanic, Latino, and Asian students with similar high school grades, test scores, and course taking all go to college at about the same rate and a rate about five percent points higher than white students with similar academic preparation by those measures. Similarly, boys and girls with the same high school grades go to college about the same, at the same rate. So essentially, college preparation matters in making sure that students have an equitable opportunity in enrollment in colleges. So the opportunity, what, what they do in our K twelve system really will matter for a lot of our students when we look at our subgroups and how that actually helps close those gaps for college enrollment. And so really, there's a lot of studies out there that kind of show that in the Brookings study that happened in twenty twenty-three was something worth exploring. This is just links to what that living, what a living wage looks like. When I go into the living wage for MIT.edu, we can kind of see, I know it might be hard to see, but you know, for a single adult, what they would need to make to have a living wage for two adults, for two adults, one working and two adults both working with children, without children, we can see that the costs that they would need to, to have, the cost that, that they have when they have children or without children increases. And the living wage becomes much more important, especially when you have children. And if they miss out on the opportunity to have, to be eligible for, qualify for high-paying, well-paying jobs, they risk running into poverty, risk, risk running into falling within the poverty line and, and, you know, having a harder time as adults. So prior, being able to provide an opportunity for our, our students with the best chance to have the best opportunities is something that we wanna do. But ultimately, at the end of it all, is really just giving them that choice and, and giving them the opportunities to, to determine their own futures. And one example, you, we kind of look at is Fontana High School. Fontana High School is probably a flagship for a lot of other schools. They are ninety-five percent Hispanic, Latin, Latino students, a hundred percent tied to one school, district, but they have a seventy-seven point eight percent senior class that meets A through G. And what they do every year at Full High School is that they get all of the seniors into a room and they all fill out the college applications. And then when they come out, everyone is cheering and celebrating. There's cheerleaders there, there's parents there, they're crying, everybody's having a great time. The kids, and you'll see the student here, he's really marking how many colleges he applied to. So every student goes, and when they go through the whole process, they fill out the application, they come out and they, they, everyone is celebrating what they've been able to do and accomplish. And then they get to mark down how many colleges they applied to. And in twenty twenty-two, four hundred and twenty high school students at Fontana High School seniors submitted nearly two thousand one hundred applications for, for your college and university. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's them deciding that we wanted to create a system where our students have the best opportunity to have choices for themselves in their future and, and hopefully not miss out on the opportunities that, that the careers would be waiting for them if, otherwise if they had not had that opportunity. So that really is kind of leads into that board resolution that we put here for the first reading to really establish what is our floor, what is the, you know, the, the opportunity that we want all kids to have. And then the supports that should go behind it to make sure that it isn't just leaving kids into a system without any kind of support to be successful.
All right. I think there are gonna be a good number of questions on this. I'm gonna start with Jaden and work this way. If you have any questions, we can also come back to you. Okay, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I got a lot. But I'll just, I'll start and then we'll go around, round, round. The resolution doesn't say anything about graduation, but I heard you say it in the presentation. So is this, are we adopting a graduation standard?
This would be an adoption of a college preparatory course sequence. So we would be adopting an A through G course sequence. So if.
So the student who doesn't meet A through G graduate from high school?
So a student, for example, has access to the A through G sequence. And every student would be placed on an A through G sequence. They would be on a college preparatory pathway. But if they got a D in an English course and they didn't make that up or didn't do a credit recovery, then they would not be eligible for UC or CSU's. They would not be A through G. So, but they would still graduate, correct?
I got a lot more, but I'm gonna be fair. No, no.
I don't have any questions. I told Philip, who had to leave, that I would echo his sentiments and he's, he's in support of it. Especially when he sees some of his peers are like, were never enrolled in art or kept putting off Spanish or French, you know, which meant that they weren't A through G. And so I'm, I'm just here to echo his sentiments, but I'm, I'm supportive of it, so.
Sheldon's question was mine. I think it's great. I, I love this and I love the way you presented it. I think it's really important. I'm glad that they can still graduate. I really wanna highlight the importance of the, the directive to include necessary learning support systems, interventions, realignment, dedication of resources, beginning early and pre-K, elementary and junior high, middle school, so that students are prepared to successfully complete the sequence at all grade levels. That's huge. It's a huge order. It's gonna require, I would imagine, a tremendous amount of funding. And it's absolutely essential for the success of the program. So I just wanna make sure that we don't, you know, that, that we have a real, I mean, it's, I know you will have this, but you know, a plan that's very specifically gonna outline how these things are gonna happen. When I'm at San Antonio, they're really concerned about how that works at their school. They're not worried about their students not graduating, but if they're not A through, I mean, how, how does a slower-paced, it's not so much that it's less rigorous, it's just that it's slower-paced so that it doesn't meet the standard of that A through G. And they're very concerned about that, you know, like how does that, what happens to those students?
Yeah, I think we will have to definitely do is, is spend time to really look at our, like San Antonio Continuation School, what, what it had been designed for. And many continuation schools is supposed to be an acceleration. It's students who fall behind maybe a year or so. And they're, and they're in a continuation school to accelerate the same courses that they might have failed at the comprehensive sites to catch up so to, they can go back. Or maybe they finish there, but they're all finishing at this, with the same access to the same courses and not deviating from, from a difference, onto a different track. So it's really, really evaluating that. And then again, providing those necessary supports. And what you'll see is just, just adding this, the opportunity for all kids to be on this sequence will hit a ceiling where, okay, well, yeah, we might notice that maybe ten percent of our kids are meeting it, but the, that ceiling is, but a lot of kids are maybe getting D's and they're not passing. So that leads to, okay, what is that? What are, what will be the other ceilings that we need to address, which will be the academic side, which would be D's and F's, for example, that we'll have to address. And you'll start to see that with the common assessments, right? Where, where we will then begin to systematically address, how do we continually monitor our instruction so that we can continually increase the rigor and the expectations of students to meet the demands of A through G and demands of Common Core? So they can be successful in their primary years, so they, and so the middle years and the, and the high school years. But changing the system allows us to say, okay, well, here's where the floor is. And where students start to, to waver is what do we need to do to accelerate and make sure those students can be successful? Because we'll start to see that we need to maybe have a conversation around what is an equitable way to, for students to, to our grading system, for example, homework, for example, and other things that we'll need to address as we start to see where the ceilings start to happen throughout our, throughout our system.
But Tony, I think at San Antonio and also at Sonoma Mountain and Carpe Diem, their classes are not A through G approved. So how does that work then?
Yeah, so it would probably have to spend some time to take a look and see why they aren't. I know they are starting to look at some of the courses and making some of the courses A through G. You know, it's, if they're taking, you know, an art class, for example, and it's not A through G, I guess the question is why isn't it A through G? What, what difference are they doing in that class that they wouldn't be, that they would be doing in another class? And at the comprehensive sites, that would be any, any more different. And so it's really just making sure that we're providing them that opportunity. If they took art that was an A through G class and they failed it, they should have the opportunity to make up that same class, not a different class that doesn't count for anything. So it's really making sure we're, we're giving them the opportunity and the access to it. Because it could just be, they just don't have the access. So therefore, it was never, it's not, you know, something that was ever a part of their, their, the opportunity for them. So those are things that, as we build out the system to make sure that those things can be addressed and, and make sure that we can address it responsibly and with the input of our staff and, and our students.
I'm really glad. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's see.
Oh, did you?
Back.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can, as long as it's not a brand new question.
I, I just, but I can hold my thought until you have yours.
No, as long as it's on the same.
Sure, okay. I'm just really glad you brought up San Antonio. I just think there's a few things to remember is that not all, the students aren't there because they're not capable academically. And so I think there's no reason that they can't be A through G. And I think Tony made a good point. They're actually moving faster because of the catch-up. Yeah, so, and.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I, I, I just think that, and they don't all have to graduate from there. They can go back. But then, like, if a student's on an A through G track and they're at San Antonio for whatever reason, and they're there for a semester and then they're thrown off, like, we're doing them a disservice. Because then when they go back to CASA or Paloma, they're no longer on that A through G track. And then just one more thing about, actually, this is something else. So I'm gonna go back to Jaden.
I mean, I was just gonna say, like, I would also probably wanna highlight, like, emphasizing, like, probably like sophomore, junior year to students that, like, if they do think that they wanna be on the track to go to college, like emphasize, like, these A to G requirements, like, I, yeah, I feel like I've had some, I wasn't there for the college and career meeting, but like, I feel like I do know some people that, like, regret not taking certain classes because they were like, oh, shoot, I forgot that this was an A to G requirement. And I need it in order to apply to UC and CSU's. And then also, I don't know if this is related, but like, the College and Career Centers, like, I feel like maybe there's like, especially with like applying to college, I feel like at Paloma High School, like, our, like, college counselor's been like so booked. So like, I don't, I'm not sure that like every single student's getting as many, like, meetings with her as much as like we all want to. And maybe that's like a difficulty, because I know, like, for the UC application at my school, like, everyone was rushing to get appointments with her, like, in November when it was due. So that could all, yeah. So I mean, obviously, that's like part, just like students procrastinating, but also like we need to emphasize, like, students need to, like, meet, like, meet with her earlier or just like something like that.
I've been trying to figure out what doesn't, why this doesn't sit right with me, because it doesn't. And I, I think it has, I, I, I think a lot of it has to do with the equivalence of A through G as a quality education. As somebody who's spent twenty years in the CSU, I'm not certain that it's a good standard, quite honestly, for admissions to college. And, and I've seen other districts, San Jose in particular, adopted as a graduation standard to the detriment of, of most of their students, simply from the mathematics of the CSU and the UC cannot take all A through G eligible students. They don't have the capacity. The state has never funded us that way. And what, and I think what, what I saw in San Jose that worries me is the opportunity cost for students. And, you know, one way that that could be fixed is if we, if we can guarantee that all CTE classes are A through G. Because then you could be knocking out both at the same time and kind of accidentally be eligible for college if you decide to do so later, but also pursue your passions. They didn't have that in San Jose. And, and I'm wondering if we can make that guarantee. And I would, I wanna hear Dan, Dr. O's perspective on this as the CTE Career Pathways Coordinator, like, how can, how could we make this work in a way that increases students' opportunities rather than narrow? A through G is, is, there's no variance in it. That's what really bothers me, particularly on, I think it's C, mathematics. Three years recommended for, I've seen so many students just academic lives die in that standard because the, this one issue is holding them up from taking an elective that they're, they're just fired up about or, or other things. So it, it's the, it's the opportunity cost that I think that really worried me. So let, let's, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm asking if we can address that in this resolution. As it is right now, I don't think I could support it. I, but if we can, if we can make sure that the A through G pathways, you call it, Tony, doesn't constrict students' opportunities, then, then that's good. And I'll just say, you know, another reason why adopting A through G is kind of a standard that, that worries me is because even the university systems are so fickle about A through G. It was just four or five years ago that they proposed changing mathematics to four years guaranteed without consultation of the K twelve system or the state legislature. They're just gonna say that the CSU and the UCs are seeing all these students coming in without preparation for STEM majors. And they said, okay, we want four years of mathematics without consultation with the K twelve. That, that would have, thank goodness, the trustees there saw the light. But what, what would have happened, what the predictions were is our, our marginalized students, particularly BIPOC students, would have, would have been screened out of college. And, and I'm worried about that kind of a situation. Adopting higher standards doesn't lead to higher performance. We have to build it from the bottom and say, how do we, you know, when I see. We have to build it from the bottom and say, how do we, you know, when I see that we are only achieving A through G with 41% of our students? And then when Lindsay was saying only 41% of our students are meeting grade level, grade level mathematics, which is always the. The A through G part that holds up students. What that tells me is let's change how we are. How we are teaching and delivering the education before we move the standard, moving the standard. Just will guarantee more people fail until we get the performance of them up to the standard that we want to hold.
You make a good point, and and I think those are things that we need to be very careful from of as we as we, you know, consider something like this. I can tell you from my experience, you know, overseeing CTE in several different districts and even here. A through G can definitely be an A through G course. And if it's not, we wouldn't want to add it because. CTE, correct. CTE can also count for VAPA in certain situations, so they can triple account for for a lot of things. And so it's really making sure that. Kids have access to CTE because they're awesome. You know, it's a great opportunity for kids to really explore. Things that they're interested in, like you were mentioning, A through G is just an indicator of what of. Well, how we made it define what that premium education is in lieu of nothing, because there's nothing else really. We we can say, well, we're going to offer. Unless we offer IB programs, for example, but those IB programs are naturally, I think, A through G. And and so it really just comes down to what are we saying? We want all kids to have access to regardless of. Their disability, regardless of their language fluency, or regardless of where they come from, or what demographics they come from, or where they live, that they have this opportunity. And what that is and how do we define that? And then what support systems will be there? When I was a high school principal, we were at 69% graduation rate. We went through A to A through G and we jumped 10% in graduation rate. And then we went back and we've we looked at our instruction and said, okay, well, what do we need to do to raise the level of expectation for the students? Not lower it for them and then provide systems if a student failed this class, they were automatically put in a current recovery class. Students were put in shadow classes for courses that they needed. Based on multiple points of data. It wasn't just, well, this kid wasn't showing me he has an F, we're going to put him in a some another class that he might hate or she might hate. It was, let's look at what the reasons why through another system of of looking at what makes sense, what? What groups of students might need and provide them that tier two level of instruction and and be specific and targeted and strategic about it. But it helped knowing that there was at least they were going against the system that we can measure if it was effective or not. And so. You know, in other places like San Jose and maybe even Santa Rosa. Their approach met have been different and and the outcome may was different. And I think what the best thing we can do is learn from them. And not necessarily need to move faster than we we need to move. But I know the bell schedule is committees, you know, has been meeting and addressing, helping, trying to address these things too, because they're recognizing that our English learners and students with disabilities. Are. Yeah, they're stuck with not being able to have access to the arts, to CTE, to the courses that keep them in school, the courses that that sets them on fire about wanting to be in school. And so. And then when they finish with us, the, you know, the question is, where did they go and what happens to them? And what are what is our responsibility to that? If we don't at least provide them. A level of expectation and opportunity that we that we are that other kids are finding. For themselves despite what we currently have.
And I think Sheldon, you're absolutely right that. A through G does not guarantee placement in Cal State or UC. There's not enough space, but it. It it creates the eligibility to apply and it denotes this, you know, this sense of premium education. That we want for our students. When I talk with parents at LCAP committee and. One of the things that they say, I have no, I don't even know what you're talking about A through G doesn't. I don't even know what that means. I'm high school. I'm 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 a college graduate. I mean, I've heard this over and over. My college graduate, I don't know what you're talking about, Matthew, A through G, but. When I give you, I say, this is my child. I want you, I want them to have all the opportunities open to them in the world. They are. There's a, there's a, it's almost like an assumption that there's a premium education. When we talked with in the ERC, I when we talked to this with our our labor partners in 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 a meeting. It was interesting. We had a long, long time teacher. Say, I don't, I just don't understand this resolution. Explain it to me. We said, we were talking about A through G and he said, oh, I thought we already did. I thought we are. I just assumed we were already. Down that path. I mean, so some of our teachers are assuming that that's already what we're doing. And I think our parents. Assume that this is what we have. And so I think there are, there are many concerns, but I think that that. And to, you know, to to Jaden's point, talking to. Our 10, our 10th graders, 11th graders about about A through G and making sure that taking the right classes. I mean, I think we need to tell you, talking to our first graders. Our third graders are are definitely our eighth graders. Seventh and eighth graders as they're as they're registering for their first clock courses. Here's the expectation. Here's the pathway. And and building, I mean, the the bell schedule is massive, massively important. In how this rolls out. Because it's more opportunities for students as well as CTE. CTE courses, we're not going to prove a CT course that's not A through G.
I I think I would probably share your same concern, Sheldon, if. If math was the issue with the A through G. But I keep taking it back to the equity study and. That math doesn't seem to be the issue. It's the students aren't being placed from the beginning in A through G classes. Or like, let's say a student gets a D in Spanish one. They can actually still be A through G eligible if they get a C or better in Spanish two. They can still be A through G eligible. They get a D in math one and they. Get a C or better and math three, like there's still a route for they call it validation. So I think just. Not just kind of like cutting it up. Okay, math. Whatever, Spanish ninth grade, you got a D or worse, you're done. It's like there is still a path for you to college or for wherever. But it just seems like, at least from the equity study and just from what we know anecdotally and what we've experienced as parents. The students are not being placed in the correct sequence to give them all of the options.
Yeah, no, I I absolutely agree. A through G discussions have to start in junior high because if you start off as a freshman behind it, you're you're toast. But but yeah. But I I. I I just want to. You know, say we have all of our students graduate A through G. You know, and are eligible for college. Only 30% of them are actually going to do it. And so 70% are going to rely on what education they had in through high school to do whatever it is they want to pursue. And so, you know, I I just don't want it to come at the expense of of students who. You know. Have their passions elsewhere, but didn't get the opportunity to explore those in high school. And so. You know, if if we can add in this resolution. That all CTE classes will be A through G. That would take a lot off my mind. Because that would be broadening opportunities rather than constraining.
And also, I know SCO is, I am like cubicle partners with the CTE people at SCO and they really are working with. The counselors and with the districts. To make sure that the classes are A through G that are CTE and if they're not, then to try to move in that direction. So. That's happening as well.
I guess my question is, logistically, does this mean? All of our courses are going to have to be A through G by fall 2024?
Well, PE is not an A through G course, for example. That's just a state requirement.
Yeah. But all of the ones that theoretically should be aligned and somehow aren't, I guess. I mean, what what is the lift on our end? To get all these classes to be A through G?
And I also think, I also think that we we have to think about this as a. Working with our labor partners and figuring this out together. It's not a, it's not a. Okay, starting, starting in August, where this is, this is it. Is it going to have to be? One course at a time, we have to make adjustments and tweaks and figure this out. It's not a, it's an overnight, it's an overnight fix or overnight plan.
That's, I guess, what I'm asking. And that's the answer I wanted to hear for like, I don't want it to just be a sudden A through A to G switch and. If you don't get on board, you're in the dust.
Well, I'm glad we're having this discussion and being thoughtful because I have spoken with folks from. A neighboring district, A through G, and they're not happy with the result and they felt like they jumped into it too fast. It was just like you're saying, okay, fall 2024 like. And there weren't the supports. There wasn't like the buildup. And there wasn't like room for, oh, this student actually needs, you know, two years of newcomer English. So like we or this student really has tried to take, you know, Spanish and they they can't. Like there wasn't really, it didn't seem like there was a lot of wiggle room or support from the district level. So I'm actually really glad we're having this conversation so that we can do this in a really thoughtful way. So that the students succeed, like you're saying, the labor partners are happy and so we can walk away from this decision feeling good and hopeful about it.
Yeah, this is, I see this as sort of a vision. I mean, this is a board resolution setting out, setting out the intention, the purpose. Where we're heading and then there's a lot of work that needs to happen to make this to to bring this to fruition.
And and if you really look at ARCA requirements and what A through G is. I mean, what we're asking is that we want VAPA to be required as opposed to as an option, right? And we want. CTE, well, CTE is not an A through G requirement, but we're going to make it something where it's it's A through G and that it can count for VAPA, it can count for. Maybe some other A through G requirements. You know, we value language. We're building a dual language immersion, you know, school. So. We're not, we're not asking kids to choose between a VAPA or language or CTE. We're saying we we value these things and giving them that opportunity to be that. That shift there and we already off require three years of math, sort of, we require two years, but related math. So we're all making is that's a shifted into the math. And a lot of schools, they know math is a struggle for a lot of students, but they offer different options for math, like. Sports statistics where kids can learn about statistics through sports and it becomes a different way of of, you know, enjoying, I guess, math as opposed to, right? Right, things like that that we can explore. You know, the the non-traditional ways of of meeting A through G in a different untraditional classrooms.
You know, just. Since we're having this conversation, it just it sparks to me that that's the kind of, you know, when they've had options in the past, they just weren't. A through G approved, they could have been, but the process is on risk. But still, you know, to have something like that as an option. And in the past, it just wasn't A through G. So, you know, it was, it was a graduation, but not A through G. So. To make everything. Were most everything on that. Course sequence is just. Helping it because, you know, at that same meeting at San Antonio. I talked to another teacher who was telling me that a student was shocked because they didn't realize that they couldn't apply to college. And they've gone to the the College and Career Center and they were just really excited. And then it was like, no, you know, you haven't taken the right classes. And. So, you know. Your eloquent speech about opportunity and making sure that these opportunities are available are.
And we just know that they're not even guarantees. We know the job market in the next 30, 10, 20 years will be different. And we know that they'll need a higher level. Of education, but we also know that even if they got A through G, even if they went to college, we still have a college persistence problem. You know, I think it's 30% of students who graduate from college actually are in the field that they they actually are working in. So. Which then goes back to what are experiences are they having in high school? And the CTE piece becomes so important because if they can explore what they actually want to do. They might recognize, man, I I I did the nursing program. I'm glad I did in high school because I don't really want to do it. And I'm going to choose something else and not waste four years of my life figuring out that's not what I wanted to do. So it's the opportunity to to. You know, build the spark with with what we're currently doing, but at the same time. Not creating different tracks for different groups of kids.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to ask the superintendent to. Come back with this next time, including something about CTE needing to be A through G. I don't know exactly at a word bit. I'm not wordsmithing it here right now with all y'all. I'm not wordsmithing at all with all y'all. All right. So that was just a reading. We don't need to vote on that. Now, moving on to Student Services, 17.4.1. First reading, updated board policy about immunizations. Who's going to talk about this since Esmeralda isn't here?
Yes, I can speak to that.
Thank you.
We've this. Board policy has not really been updated since 2013. And really, all we're doing is updating it to meet. You know, the current requirements under under the immunization. Legislation. So you'll just see some slight changes in the board policy and the ministry regulations just to be updated. That hasn't been updated in the last 10 years.
So you see typically with the immunizations. Kindergarten is a big, the the big initial starting point when immunizations are required. And then seventh grade is the other one where there's. And so this, this board policy, as Tony said, it hasn't been updated since 2013. It really deals with the. Seventh grade, we've been having some. Many conversations about students. And so this one is making it clear that we're following the California Department of Health. When it comes to immunization and boosters, seventh graders, there's the, there's the T DAP booster that's required. And so it's, those are the two real big. Touchpoints for parents where they know they need to get immunization. So.
So to be clear to the folks watching at home, we are not requiring new vaccines. This is all CDPH. So if you don't like it, take it up with them, not us. We'll move on to first reading of the administrative regulation. This is just matching the board policy. We need to adopt an AR every time we adopt a board policy. So as long as, are there any questions about either of these with immunizations? Now, all right, moving on to future business. I'm going to go first, even though I shouldn't. I feel like I asked a long time ago about an update about our friends at Live Oak. And so unless it happened when I was in Portugal. I would like an update. And. About what's going on with them. Yeah. Are they still, are they going to be here? Are they going to be at Crete? Where are they going? What are we doing with them? And then, yeah, I think what I asked Esmeralda, like a update on our suspension rate and other. Things and really looking at the proportionality and the amount and all of those.
Asking for, because I was going to ask for something similar. So.
I just about what's going on. So if you have something more specific, please.
I wanted to actually have it. Added and hopefully for all future slide shows. Like when we're putting up suspension rates and breaking it down or just in general, just having. The like, let's say that at school, there's 80% of suspensions, suspensions are Hispanic students. Show that only 30% of the student population is just so we can see it right there. So, yeah, I just, and I'm hoping that we can revisit. I guess, have that presentation revisited. At some point mid-year. So it's not just once a year, but keeping it top of mind for folks.
For all staff, not just us, I believe, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to look at, you want to look at data from from this year? Sort of, or the first semester, or you want to relook at the data from last year that you just presented with?
I want to look at last year as compared to the first semester of this year.
Okay.
I want to see what we're doing if PBIS and stuff is actually working.
I would love to hear an update about the bill schedule. We've been talking about it. So.
Jaden, you're going to have your discussion item or your item, it sounds like at the next meeting, the one that you've been asking for, the discipline?
Oh, yeah. Good. I adding on to about the safe classroom, like what Esmeralda was talking about, I think. I feel like it would be interesting to have statistics about whether the incidents were student to student or student to teacher. And yeah, and if if they've been resolved.
And who defines it as resolved? Because someone might. An admin might say it's resolved, but if you ask the students, they might say it's not resolved.
Yeah, I feel like we can add that into that. The incidents, safe, safe classrooms, safe schools, update that you asked for, Jaden.
Any other future business? If you think of something later, you can always email Matthew. You just say library. What do you want about the library? Okay, whatever Matty said last time about the library.
We can, well, we can talk after, but are you talking about the a course update or from our library?
From our librarians. Yeah, I think they were supposed to present last spring.
All right, we don't have to adjourn to closed session, so I will just adjourn the meeting at 9:48 PM. Thank you all for sticking it out.